You're live. All this committee has the whole meaning to order and the first item of business is to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion to do that? Counselor Korlick second to by, Counselor Studley, all those in favor. And the minutes of June 10th, can we have a motion to accept those minutes? Counselor Krog, Counselor Maslin, all those in favor. And we are then down to presentations by staff and we have Graham and Cavan here this morning and I'll turn it over to you gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, we're just going to take over the screen here.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Council for the opportunity to go through some of this discussion this morning. So we've got basically a breakdown of the paper that's in the agenda by section and I guess looking for the opportunity for feedback, comment, and even, you know, consideration of each of the resolutions and how they can be broken out. So Cavan had a few introductory remarks and we'll just tag team our way through this.
So I wanted to emphasize three things for the process here because we're going to go through some background information and then kind of a step-by-step explanation of it. And the key thing to note is that there's policy objective to set. So the overall what as an organization we're going for with the in-kind options. So the big picture, this is what we're trying to do from 30,000 square feet. There's the actual buyout process in terms of setting the broad strokes on that and considering that separately from the policy objective. So the policy objective dealing with the in-kind support, the buyout process being a process in and of itself and largely being separate as a process although obviously linked to the in-kind options. And then third, there are the options themselves. So again, separate from the objective, separate from the buyout process, the actual in-kind options under consideration. So the idea being that these could be changed, accepted, and I would put on the table that each has a separate resolution attached to it because there are separate issues that should be endorsed separately.
Thank you. So just a couple of graphs briefly on impacts. This is just an illustration of the range of pre-flood and post-flood values. I want to just distinguish post-flood values from current market values. The post-flood values that are in this graph are what was obtained from the grant late last year and basically indicate, you know, known conditions at that time within the constraints that the appraisers had, which was very short timeline and incomplete information in many cases, as well as a lack of market response since the flood. So since last fall, there's been some changes. Some homeowners have made some further repairs and adjustments and current market value is the next round of information that would come in before buyouts would occur. So this is just basically information developed for the grant. So you can see, sorry, Eric, you have that. So you can see the Y-axis is home values and the X is just basically a ranking of from low to high in post-flood value. And so it ranges from closer value of about 20,000 to about 430,000. And the pre to post-flood difference is quite stark for many and less so for some. So some of these ones are either less damaged homes or homes where major repairs happened where you don't have a very large difference between pre and post-flood. Part of the impact to understand is how did disaster financial assistance support or not support some of the households? So basically, we just ranked this by amount of disaster financial assistance obtained. Where there was no DFA, it was either because it was a rental and they didn't have insurance in place and no DFA was eligible, or they had insurance and no DFA was eligible. So we don't have data on insurance. But moving through once again a wide range and you can see in some cases that the combination of post-flood value and DFA comes somewhere in around the pre-flood value. In other cases, it's very, very different and it does not add up to both. This is an example of how different people are affected by what's happened so far differently.
And the context on the DFA and having it here is not for any sort of, I know one of the common questions was, is it going to get called back or anything like that? It's not to consider that at all. It's just to provide the context for what kind of financial assistance was given out. And the big takeaway is that you can see all properties where there wasn't a lot of financial assistance, you know, either minimal, less than 20,000, or none at all.
Can I just ask a question? This graph, is that all of the properties that are on the potential buyout list?
This is all of the properties with homes on them. So we didn't include vacant properties or portions of properties. And generally, those are all at about, only reflect that stigma value, the loss of value, and not really reflecting damage.
Okay, so I wanted to be sure that that's...
Thank you. So this is also in the report, but just a few statistics that are said as well. That difference is between 11,000 and 358,000 and an average of 79 and a median of 68. And what that means is that there are some really large values that skew the average a little bit. So the median is exactly the midpoint. If you ranked them all as we did in that graph, the median decreases to 68,000. And something that was said in the report, that bottom line is that half of the households with houses on them would receive less than 100,000. That's based on this median value, median post-flood value of 100,000. And you can see once again the skew of the larger values moving in that direction. So and once again, an emphasis that is only an estimate that was done for the grant and individual values are likely to change. So shifting into the next part of the discussion here, there's some overall policy objectives to consider for what the role of the city is, what degree of support is here. And so staff through many discussions after the request to look at in-kind options came forward is looking at what are the, what is in line with the official community plan, what's in line with the strategic objectives from recovery, what's in line with various things. And these are some recommended goals and objectives. So affordable and attainable housing. So this is what's within means of people affected by the buyout. So Council aims to support viable and attainable options for relocation of all homeowners in the area. And then context that that in-kind support may be allocated according to means. And that would need to be discussed with residents and have some input on it.
And one of the pieces there is the suggested statement. So the recommendation would be to change, mold, or endorse the statement and then really feel that Council can get behind the overall 30,000 square foot objective for the in-kind support.
Or 30,000 foot, I guess.
I liked the earlier part because I was thinking inside the box.
So I'll go through all four objectives and then we can come back for discussion. So two buzzwords that are passed around that are both important in here, but equity and fairness being the objective, of course, the quality of being fair and impartial, and then within equity, treating people equally without favoritism or discrimination. There was a comment on Thursday night from one of the people in the buyout meeting that David Norr organized that, you know, he was concerned, I think, about backroom deals or transparency and different things. And we've got certain constraints, of course, but by designing the process right, I think we can ensure that these two are maintained.
Can I mention too that I was asked the question, would we be requiring people to sign non-disclosures when they made deals? And my answer was that would be inconsistent with our transparency.
I think at this stage, I think we'd be getting legal input on all of those items, basically, to see what our responsibilities are.
Right. And I know it may be a legal issue, but I think it's also, you know, an issue of confidence with the public.
Yeah, the, there would be that concern that if there's 50 people, you don't know what's happening. But then it is their life and their property. So that's why it's private, that nothing stops a person unless legal says that you don't go tell your neighbors what's happening if they ask, right? So they would still have that choice.
I hope so.
Right, so. So the other issue here is that people had different means and abilities after the flood to make new options. And if people already have obtained another house or are in the process of doing it, they would also want to see fairness, that someone else isn't going to get a quote-unquote better deal with them. So this idea of not providing a financial lift, it was discussed thoroughly by staff and also had some discussion with ethicists, just to look at what kind of things should be worried about here. If you are looking at having that first objective of attainability within means, but secondly, looking that they're not actually providing a financial lift, it's not a compensation, it's a way of providing people with housing that allows them to go forward, build equity and so on, but not get a financial lift.
Sorry. Is there an example of that? Because I think that one sentence is messing with people's minds.
Which one?
Oh, overall financial lift to the overall asset value of property of interest in kind. So an example of...
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Sure. So let's take an example of someone affected by the flood whose property is now worth about 100,000 and pre-flood is maybe worth 150,000 as an example. So if the city helps them out by providing a serviced lot that the cost of services over time would be paid for by the lease, there wouldn't be any lift because they would still own a home or a, you know, an asset that they could have on that lot, but the city would be leasing it. So basically, if they had enough resources to pay for a manufactured or a modular home or were able to move their own home onto that property, they wouldn't be gaining any financially by being given a free lot. But the city also wouldn't be necessarily trying to gouge on that lot either as a private market. So that's one example. The alternative is if the city...
Just before you leave, Graham, can you tell me an actual example on the ground where we're doing that today, where we're leasing lots and expecting cost over time?
I don't know the details of cost over time, but it's basically with a local service area where a developer might put in services and not pay for them at the front and then it's put on taxes over time.
I guess my point being is this still would be new for us.
Well, there are examples of those.
North Ruckel sewer.
And parcel town.
So you worship the only leases that we have right now is to nonprofits and different things like that. So there's not really a huge money changeover on those type of things. So that's kind of the only lease options that we have right now. So this is brand new as far as the city are.
And there's a discussion in the objectives about co-ops or land trusts that could provide an entity to lease to that would maintain that tenure and control. So we can get to that in discussion.
She also pointed out that we are asking Council to consider new ideas. So I think it's good to recognize that this is not just business as usual, this is something new and different.
So I have a question. Do you want this as a separate motion for each of these policies, the four policy decisions? I'm wondering on this basis whether we couldn't wrap up this at this point by opening it to the gallery and making a decision that we pass forward to tonight's meeting?
For each?
For each of the four policies.
Yeah, because each one can be tweaked to suit, then I would recommend having, instead of doing like an omnibus motion at the end, I would recommend having something progressive as you go along, just to keep it clear what you're moving on.
And it seems to me if we move through them one at a time and accept them, that would make more sense. Counselor?
Yeah, I guess I'll just speak for myself personally. I don't know if I'm here yet. I personally am going back to the original goals that were stated in a few emails we brought that, so the comments, help provide the city with the tools to build a more resilient community, that this community is built back better, and give the people affected by the floods a means and opportunity to rebuild homes and communities in Grand Forks. And those three statements that I've written basically does not necessarily mean wiping out North Ruckel. So, yeah, personally, I'm not there that we have to buy out North Ruckel for a little bit of flipping.
Okay, I think you're stretching the topic on the table at this point in that this is buyouts, which more than likely will happen whether that question of yours in terms of North Ruckel happens or not, because it's a general, these are general rules for the current challenge facing us, is that we will have some buyouts, whether it's all of North Ruckel or some other areas of that plan. Is that correct?
There are some properties that are in the way of the proposed acting infrastructure outside of North Ruckel.
So let's deal with this as an issue of process in buyouts.
With respect, I would like to hear the rest of the presentation and then come back to each item.
Each one at the end.
At the end and get feedback from the people in the gallery that are impacted.
Have the whole picture first in terms of the four options and the council nodding yes? That's the plan.
Do you want public input on each, on as we go, rather than, because that's what we're talking about it?
Yeah, but I think I would rather everybody has the full picture of what the presentation is.
Okay, but Neil's asking, do we want the public involved in each step of the four policies we're going to address here?
Yes.
And the answer is yes. If you have a question from the gallery, then put up your hand and we'll recognize you. Ma'am?
My question is on that equitable, moving people onto another lot, would you not just say, okay, I'm going to take your lot, which is worth this much, and we'll give you a lot here that's worth this much, straight across, in kind?
Okay, that's the question.
That's something that's been considered as well and not necessarily ruled out. It does involve some more complications, but the new city lot would need to be appraised as well. And if the value was different, that would be factored into the compensation value. So it is something worth considering in the details when we get to the in-kind options.
Thank you, Graham. And behind you, Eric?
The leases from the city or whatever, the land leased to us from the city, is that always kept by the city? We can't sell it? We just go live on it for the rest of our lives? Or why does that work?
I think the equity options are something that would be very, depending on the project. Cavan?
So what, the example that was given, and keep in mind that none of these have been endorsed yet, so it's just for the sake of discussion, but the example that was given would be if you had a house that was movable or a trailer. And so you would own a house or trailer, the actual improved or the dwelling portion of it that you could sell, but the actual lot itself would remain owned by the city at least. So in that sense, you can sell and usually get mortgages, I believe, on those kinds of things. So you would have an asset with value, but it wouldn't include the actual land that you'd be on.
I'm sorry, Zalinski. Just for clarification, unless I missed a meeting, just let people know that we do not have any city lots that are identified and serviced for you to transfer homes onto right now. So just let you know that there is no piece of dirt to say, yeah, that one's mine. So.
And the other thing too, the leases would be transferable. And I think that if you owned your own home and it was moved on to a leased lot, and for whatever reason you had to sell, the person who bought your home, the lease would be transferred to them. So it's not going to negatively impact you. You don't have to buy the lot, you just have to pay the, just a lease.
So, Mr. Mayor, so one suggestion, I know we asked for input at this point, which I think is really good, but one thing that I'm seeing is that we're getting into the examples of in-kind options. And right now, we're talking about the overall objectives. So it might be useful to walk through and then come back for feedback at each individual slide because there's, yeah, and then likewise for objectives. So just, let's give the 10,000 foot level and then dive back in for discussion if that's all right.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
And, okay, so third objective, this...
A gentleman in the back there had a question.
I think we're going, in my opinion, we're trying to make something work that the feds and provincial government have fed us. And I'm wondering why there is no effort made to get us treated like pre-flood, like other provinces or places. We're trying to make it work. How come we're not fighting them and saying, why aren't we being treated the same? I don't understand that.
We are not on a formal level doing that, but we certainly on a personal level have expressed our concern. And I've had feedback in terms of the fact that this does not look like something the feds and the province will agree to, but a lot of sympathy to helping us use our resources as we're talking in kind to do something about it. So that's where it stands. If Council wishes to make a formal application, I think that we need to do that by motion and by plan.
I would think that that's something we should be fighting for. I mean, why are we being discriminated against?
We're just not counting on them at this point. We're going to do our part and the best we can.
As long as this doesn't lock us into something and they'll say, well, you already got it handled. Because as you've seen with the chart...
That's the trap sometimes of being resilient, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry to...
The chart does show this considerable difference.
I hope they look at it as if, you know, we're doing our very best. Can you help us? And there are some really interesting ways in future that that might materialize.
Yeah, there are some provinces, as you said, that got that pre-flood. So we need to find out what the details are. Because a lot of times on the surface, it looks identical. They got pre-flood, we didn't get pre-flood. Why? And then is there a rationale for it? Because if there isn't, then why didn't we get it as well? So those are, yet, we are going to ask those questions.
There is a precedent as far as I'm concerned. Thanks.
Okay, and we're derailing here again if we want to get up to that 300 square foot level.
Okay, so this is in line with the city's asset management policy and approach that just making sure that the investments made for servicing new areas are, A, a long-term benefit or provide other strategic, you know, other development is enabled by it, or likewise, and likewise that the lease income, taxes, utility and service fees, et cetera, are able to help pay for those costs over time. So there is, there could be a way of doing investment in new infrastructure that just created future liabilities for the city. So it's just basically to be within asset management, not to go outside of that policy. And then within our capacity, it's a fairly small staff and, you know, some new dedicated capacity for supporting implementation of DMF and other mitigation. But there is a work planning load associated with all the options that we have identified. And we will be bringing a follow-up report in August 12th, just to look at the overall work plan and the types of projects, or types of reports, resolutions that by law is needed to bring it forward. So we'll come back to this after, maybe after just looking into the options a little bit in the process.
So just mentioned, that was the end of the policy, the 30,000 foot level. This is now a detail that we're getting into. So this is detail on the buyout process.
Limited by the fact that our staff had not had a kick at the canyon in working this out and that this step of getting the basics will set the stage for their working orders over the next while to flesh these things out. So this morning, I don't want to get bogged down in detail that you're not in a position to answer. So you're looking for general feedback on the concepts more than on the detail?
That's right, yeah. So the broad strokes of the buyout process, but just acknowledging that it's a shift in gears from the policy discussion.
Right, thank you.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Barry Jarvis, I'm a resident of Grand Forks, ready two questions from the 30,000 foot level. One, of the $50-plus million, how much of that is budgeted for soft costs?
So the rule of thumb...
Professional fees if you...
Yeah, the rule of thumb on this project is it's between 10 and 15%, including engineering, which you could call a soft cost, but, you know, really is part of the project that you can't build without plans.
10 to 15% from five to seven and a half million is a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Last question is, the city has committed about $3.6 million of our own funds, one million for the addition of the DMF funding and another two and a half, 2.6 for downtown businesses. Am I reading that correctly? These funds are to be paid from the taxpayers that are left standing?
The city is bearing the burden over a period of time, yes. So just to be fair on that, we certainly are using some creative ways to do that with our attempt not to impact the coming tax rates at this point, which are a very sensitive issue with a town that's planning to grow. But we will be, that is why we're not in a position of saying we can kick in another 6.6 million to top this up. So I'm going to give it back to our people here. Thank you very much, Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as Cavan said, these are preliminary notes on the process, but that currently we're engaging discussion with people familiar with different buyout designs and getting some expert input on it, as well as provincial counterparts who have been involved in them. And there's another step of hiring and contracting the team that would be doing the work. So those are both things that are basically being initiated, you know, this month. And looking to have a team in place, hopefully later in August, to assist with getting all the details for how this would work. The second part is the kind of preparation, getting all the ducks in the row once there's capacity. So assessing landowner needs. Part of this is a dialogue, a small group dialogue with landowners from various different parts of the proposed areas to look at how the in-kind options might work for them, what are their specific needs in meeting that attainability for housing in the future. So the actual options themselves would be vetted through consultation and then also costed out to see what the overall investment requirement is. So that's the confirmation of the in-kind supports. And then at some point before the actual, you know, price is known and that kind of thing, there would be current market valuation, the timing of that, we're going to want some expert input on. There's of course trade-offs of exactly when it occurs, but we'll be looking for input on that. And then the idea is initiating this once there's a team onboard and having those preparatory steps developed by this fall at some point. And thirdly, and this is the longest kind of most involved aspect, you know, with support of that professional team, landowner discussion and agreement on price and in kind, that's the buy-in, I guess, the buyout. The realty transaction and city possession, they might be separate steps if there's an agreement at one time and a possession later or if it happens all at once. We need input on those aspects. And then initiating this fall and then completing over the next year and a half to two years. And then initiating this fall and then completing over the next year and a half to two years, depending on that design process and also project prioritization, but providing some flexibility. So as soon as the overall approach is known, that the, you know, transactions could start to occur and that kind of thing, for those people who need to start moving on, on it financially, and for those who are wishing to stay longer, or the properties aren't needed right away, that it would potentially take longer. So we're thinking that it might not all happen, and what's going to happen by project area. And that depends a lot on the process design and project prioritization. So we'll be needing input from, from the engineers and, and feedback from the dialogue.
Questions on that? Councilor Moslin.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Graham, for putting this in front of us. I guess my overall, we're looking for an objective, the overall objective is retention of population. We want people to stay here. That's it, bottom line, okay? How we do that, well, that's sort of what we're trying to sketch out here. I have a question, I hate to derail the whole thing, I tried to put it in front of staff. Can we give any tax relief to people who are on the buyout list? That could be tax deferral, tax reduction, whatever, am I, am I off course here?
I'm not, I'm not all that clear on that myself. Could we have a thumbnail answer on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that would be available would be the programs that are already available for tax deferral, which is for 55-plus, and certain conditions have to be met. But we looked at this when the flood actually happened, and there was no leeway for us to write off taxes or anything like that, so.
And rebuttal, and then we have Les waiting at the back. Oh, go ahead, Councilor.
Okay, I, I just want, what did you mean by leeway, ma'am? Did you mean we couldn't afford it, or we couldn't do it legally?
The rule.
Legislatively, we couldn't do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, earlier on, I was listening to the part of a, possibly a lease-type situation, where you could have people with manufactured homes or transporting their existing homes to a new piece of property that the city owns. And that kind of popped a whole bunch of questions in my head. One was, like, as you get older, you get a tax break on the property you had. So people who were about to age out of the current value into a new bracket in existing places in Ruffel would be getting a tax break. And when they move, if they actually move into a lease situation with the city, and then they cross that age boundary, is there going to be any corresponding break for them? That was the first thing. And the, the next one is, if I own my property, I can do what I want on my property with a reason. If I'm leasing from the city property with a house on it, what prescriptions will it be on what, what is on that property, what I can do with that property? There's things like water lines, where that crosses onto my property right now, I'm responsible for repairs and stuff, but if you're on a lease situation, who's responsible for all that? Especially if it's damaged by an agent of the homeowner? Those types of things, how are those dealt with? Do you have.
That's exactly why our staff are going to sit down with you and answer those questions in our report back, because we are expecting those kinds of directions and implications, as you're saying. It's, it's not a simple black and white kind of situation, it'll be a lot of variations and choices.
One other comment, Les, I think you might have been referring to the homeowner grant?
Yeah.
The seniors? Well, if you're a senior, you still are eligible to claim that homeowner grant.
But if you don't own the property, the tax is on the property, right?
But it's still taxable.
But they're still taxable.
Okay, and we're getting off again back to.
Sure. There's, thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's, there's many details that are to be discussed and refined and so on, and I think, maybe we'll start by looking in the options, about three different types, or three target populations from the buyout area that may have different means and might have a different outcome depending on their ability to afford whole property or afford a lease. So the first option is for those who have not enough assets for purchasing a home right now, maybe they're in a poor financial situation starting off, and the flood and buyout leave their overall values home. And this also could provide a landing pad for some who may be able to afford an option in the future. And two ideas have been identified so far. One was priority placement and easing of the means or asset test for the 19th Street project. So to be clear, this is within council's power, this is a, a policy request to EC Housing and the housing provider to look at this option. The idea that was brought to the city when the funding was announced for that project is that it would provide relief in funding, and this is one concrete, relief in flooding, for the flooding, and this is one concrete way that it could provide direct support for those. So of course, this basically is rental within means. A second objective, which would take a little bit longer, but looking at city incentives and supports, the capacity support and that kind of thing, for accessory dwelling units, other rental developments that may be able to be online, are there things that the city can do to make a financial and capacity ability for a property, or whether that's a business or someone else, to add an accessory unit? And that, that basically is bringing more on the market. That's completely in line with the official community plan and measures that are already underway, but, you know, basically is providing some additional emphasis and capacity support, which have been identified in other cities where the policy changes are. The second population are people who either may be able to obtain a manufactured home, or a tiny home, or move their house, and, but maybe can't afford land. And so this is an example of servicing sites and providing long-term leases and, and then helping that, their, their, and the objective of having the maintenance, a long-term lease, is that the city has the control over the overall affordability. Of course, there's capacity being involved in, in doing a bunch of one-to-one leases, and so if there's a third party, like a land trust or a cooperative partnership, that managed that process, it would be supportive. And we'd also require additional, you know, law and bylaw permitting and zoning support to handle all of the leasing and that kind of thing. So the, the August 12th report will get into a bit of that. One of the other issues that was raised is that, that, you know, how would this affect other mobile home parks, trying to have viability? A lot of them actually require only new homes. So if someone is able to acquire a new manufactured home and can move it into a new park, this, this is different. This is for those who might be moving their existing one or acquiring another used one. I provide an example here of a mobile home park in, in Palm Springs, where there is an older mobile park, and they're going through a gradual kind of infill and slow redevelopment that maintains affordability but brings up the overall housing standard over time, quite a bit of flexibility. And, third options, so for households who have, you know, maybe the, the funding to buy land and improvements, but maybe need in-kind support, first of all, because there isn't 40, 50, 60 lots ready to go that are serviced and on the market and be flooding the, sorry, poor choice of words, delivering a whole bunch of new buyers into this market would increase costs quickly or increase prices really quickly. So if the city can look at the option of servicing lots and, you know, maybe having that cost recovery over time, this option would allow a homeowner to maintain ownership of land and have that kind of tenure over time, and this is the, the question that Mr. Johnson had. So for those that were able to afford this, this provides some attainability and then also brings them on. There is a trade-off with losing potentially the ability to keep that property affordable over time. This is more about attainable within means and would be potentially one of the options to look at. And of course, this would prove, you know, people can move their homes or purchase a manufactured module or a tiny home, this option could also be available to them. So three overall populations and, and three different types. And a fourth kind of piece, which is a lot of work, but the kind of things that planners love, is facilitating some new housing development that can, you know, provide some really great places to live for people who can move into them. And this could be new town, townhomes, pocket neighborhoods, or condominiums on city land. And then the affordability is there, is if the, the land costs can be passed on to the purchaser, or the condition of the partnership or cooperative. And then, you know, if we're trying to maintain affordability of that, is there anything that keeps the future cost within a certain amount of inflation, that kind of thing? So one example that's been brought for us is cohousing, cooperative housing, where the cooperative basically acts as the, the owner and has some role in, in the development and build-out so that it meets the needs of folks there. And this is from the Vancouver cohousing community. So, come back to this question. I think, I have, there's, I'm missing a slide, but I'm just going to say.
It's around.
Yeah, pretty fun stuff. Before we dive back in, I just wanted to read the next steps, is that all of these ideas and options would be taken for discussion with affected property owners over the coming weeks. We're proposing a series of small group workshops, we don't have the dates yet, but that's something that staff is going to be looking at. And then we'd be also costing out some of the different major options to bring that back. So this is likely a two-month process to, to get this all right, but we're bringing into a report in August to talk about some of the finer details on the, on the land use planning and other things required. So overall questions before diving back in.
Do you plan to have these little meetings with groups prior to this report coming in August?
The, through the mayor, the, in small group meetings, which is going right away and probably going through August, and then this report back from the meetings would probably be in early September. The report coming in August is really just about the overall capacity and the ability to kind of deliver on the various planning pieces of this, there's planning and servicing and all that that would come.
Councilor Moslin.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, these are all great options, and I love the forward thinking. I, I just want to point out that they're long. That if the city was going to find, in its ownership, land that was developable, and there is some, and then put services in it, such as do all of that, I mean, I bet you it'd be two years before we actually moved a home to a lot. I mean, I, you know, by the time you did all the groundwork and that sort of, my point is that for homeowners who are facing a buyout, this is a long process. I, I have a second point, Mayor, if I may.
You may.
There are two types of landowners here, and I, this is where I'm going to kick at the hornets next to the bell. There are people who want to get bought out. I call them voluntary buyouts. They want to get out. Their, their homes are ruined, their lives are disrupted, maybe they've already walked away, or they don't want to wait two years, three years. So they're voluntary buyouts. They're going to come, I assume, into this process voluntarily. The other kind of landowner I see in this puzzle is somebody who does not want to move. It's not voluntary, it's involuntary. And I'd like to use the word expropriation for that landlord, those landlords. So you have two kinds of landowners, those who are willing to stay and wait and make the transitions that they're offering them, those know we don't want to play. And, you know, both those situations are, you know, are movable, we have, we can solve them. But I do want to point out, there are two kinds out there, those who want to be bought out, and those who are going to need to be expropriated. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor, I, I recognize that you've put that on the table, but again, steering us back to the job we have to accomplish here this morning, is that we have general categories of options we want our staff to work on, to flesh out. We have a process of community meetings where people are going to have to come up into what they think they're going to need. Those things are all moving along, and our job today is to get those four policies approved, to give the green light for that kind of work to go on. But duly noted, that there are many complexities to this plan that have been brought up by yourself and Councilor Zelinski this morning that are noted, but again, back on track. We have a gentleman behind you.
Yeah, sorry, thanks, Chris. I'd like to suggest as a third type of homeowner, that, you know, we don't necessarily want to go, because we didn't have flood damage, but if, if, we understand that this is a thing that, you know, it's about keeping the city safe and all that kind of stuff, but we have to be treated fairly. And so I think there is a third kind of homeowner that is like, okay, this has to happen, it has to happen, but you have to be fair, you have to be fair.
Which is part of the talk.
And we want to stay in Grand Forks, that's the other thing.
And that is the focus of the four policies.
Through the mayor, I can speak directly to Councilor Moslin's report. I think it's, it's fair to say that there are those who, you know, want to go, don't want to go, and somewhere in the middle. The idea of working through a process where people can see a viable, acceptable, or even attractive option for where they might go next, the process of building buy-in towards that process is, is the, the goal of staff, and I think of what we're recommending of council, and that the, it can take a bit of time and a bit of dialogue to make sure all those options are really well-understood and that the process is really fair, but that overall idea of getting buy-in so people can see an acceptable, you know, next step after, after the buyout is, is there.
Nora.
I feel like we could, even those of us who don't want to leave or would like a, a more fair settlement, would be okay with all of this if we knew that all of this wasn't going to preclude further options of perhaps looking for funds from the province, or, or maybe readdressing the Expropriation Act to include a new clause that talks about post-disaster expropriations, or perhaps even does some number crunching for the city to find out what that tax increase would be if the city kicked in a little more. Because the, the truth is that, that this is to create a wonderful new city into the future, and I don't really know why we couldn't look at the numbers, at least. So I think that this could all proceed if we knew it wasn't going to preclude those other possibilities or looks, like, this is fine to set up this framework, but as long as we're not saying no to the others.
I understand, and I think the council agrees with that, that's a head nod from council, that there are many complexities here, but let's not forget about some of the other options. And back to Graham.
Thank you. So I think we were looking at specific feedback on each of the policy objectives, and then if they would be endorsed in whole or in part, if they're individual, I think Kevin gets this idea of how to, how to run this part.
The specific is one by one, just so there's clarity on what you're endorsing or, or changing.
Councilor Zelinski.
So we already have on the books a, a resolution that staff work on in-kind, a list of in-kind contributions. So what more do you need here?
The policies.
Specifically on this, it's in a chapter that's beyond go do some work. It's the organizational objective to support viable and attainable options for relocation of homeowners. So that's different from just coming up with options, in that it has a target for those options. So in that way, we can reject options that are not viable and attainable, and work more on the options that are.
Thank you. That's clear. Councilor Moslin, do you?
I also want to point out, Captain Mayor, that there were some people who were wanting to get bought out, didn't make the list. Anyhow, that aside, is it reasonable in this process to, to consider, for the city to consider purchasing land?
I think that would be covered under good business practices when I read those four options.
Do you see that? Because I, I see land becoming available.
Councilor Moslin, I think you're getting into the weeds again here in terms of detail that, that is already covered. If we, if we pass these four motions, you want them separate, I think clearly we're saying, look at things like you're suggesting.
Okay, then.
Not preclude them, which is what Nora's point was.
So the, the quick answer is, the city would consider purchasing land.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the staff would make the recommendation?
Yes, of course.
We got it.
Does anybody have any comments?
Does anybody have any comments on the, where was the first one was, the policy objectives and process is, that's where we are, which is page two of five, or are we trying to?
So the, the resolution is, is kind of grouping everything together, so that's where during the presentation, we wanted to emphasize that there was, or a recommendation to actually split it into each, each one, instead of putting it all at the same time.
Okay, but what would the motion be, you're saying?
Yeah, that council endorses the role of affordable housing. So an example would be for each one, that council endorses the role of the city in providing affordable and attainable housing options.
Problems with that, Councilor Zelinski?
No, as I mentioned before, can, can staff maybe print that out, get it up on the board so we know exactly what we're doing on it?
Well, actually, you know, we're going to be doing that tonight. These are going to be forward again tonight, and will be in your package.
As long as we see them before.
So I'm, I'm clear that this will be in a motion form for tonight's meeting, it's already on your agenda.
Isn't our job to recommend to council, maybe the whole is going to recommend to council?
Yes, yeah, that's the motion on the floor if we make it.
So it'd be good to know.
So we do it tonight.
Yeah, but it'd be good to know what that motion is.
Well, as specific as we can be at this point, since.
Yes. Okay, is this the one that the committee of the whole receives this report, and for consideration that the committee of the whole recommends council endorses policy and objectives and process, and that we recommend council to direct staff to hold exploratory discussions with landowners on identified options and present findings to the council.
Is that a book or a motion, Councilor? Is the motion?
Is that what we're looking for now?
Yeah, I think that's.
Just pass it to them.
Is that?
Through the mayor, I, I think, I think the idea could be that passing or accepting a report, recommending to council to endorse those options tonight, we could work with corporate to break it out into individual resolutions for the objectives, process, and options, to make it really clear, but at this point, it could be to pass it forward. I see the corporate officer noting.
Right, I, I'm not really having a great deal of difficulty with the way it's formatted if we get into the details you require at tonight's meeting.
Yeah, because that's where it's going.
That would be okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so let's not change the agenda layout of it, it's nice and simple, three motions, but clearly we'll break that up in discussion.
At this time, I would like to ask if the gallery, people impacted, have any questions or comments on, on.
All four.
Yeah, I thought we were going to go back.
Yeah, I thought we were going to go back one by one and give people.
Some of them were kind of motherhood, that we wouldn't act without being smart enough to put some financial thinking into it.
Yeah, but with respect, we did say that, that we were going to go back and review each one individually.
We did.
And then after, after the residents have heard, then invite their comments, and that's what I'm going to need to make decisions.
Okay, and the request to walk us backwards to the four, can you do that for us?
Through the mayor, absolutely, thank you. So the four objectives, one is on affordable and tangible housing, the second one is equity and fairness, third is the sound investment, and four is within capacity. So fairly motherhood, but also paints some lanes for staff to stay in in terms of what kind of future recommendations are brought forward. You know, like another recommendation might be breaking the asset management policy and not, not going forward on that option, right? So, so maybe general input on the objectives.
Any of the four that people would like to comment on?
So, your worship, I think what staff is looking for from council, and because we're at the committee of the whole, is the input from, from the audience here on each one of these, and the degree of importance that you want to put to that. So tonight, when there is these pieces that council's going to make the decision on, there is some really definitive language that staff can put into those resolutions in order to get what we need from here.
You know, we'd like to break them up, but in fact, they're pretty much a package. If we had read it three things and we have no capacity to do something, it's not going to work.
But this is the time that the residents can make comments. Tonight's going to be too late because it's a regular meeting, and.
Okay, a whole bunch of hands didn't go up when I last asked, and, and so.
Does that sound reasonable?
I've asked the stream here, and nobody's commented yet.
I think, sorry, I think there's some confusion that this is so vague that we don't know what to comment on. You know, I, I understand, I understand it's a direction, but like I have a very specific neat want, which is I want a lot in exchange for the lot and house that I have now, and go from there. It doesn't sound like that's what's in this. Like I want in-kind, you can have my lot to protect your, your city from floods, and I want a lot that's not going to flood. That's what I want, as an exchange.
Again, on the big picture here, we're going down the right direction, but you're not getting the detail to answer any of those specific questions. Until the work gets done by the staff, but nobody, you know, the ideas that are out on the table now, not the only ideas that are going to come out, but they are ones that all, to me anyway, and I saw it to the, the people here in the gallery, looked like good things to pursue, but let's hear more detail about them, then asking your input into it would make more sense. At this point, you know, they're in the same position we're in, we're making some philosophical decisions here.
Well, and I totally agree. The thing is, I just wanted to make sure that the gallery had the opportunity.
Yes, I understand, absolutely. Aaron?
You know, I paid 14 years into my property, and I don't consider, like I want that in-kind. I want another property comparable.
Right.
And not one leased, I want to own it.
Yeah, I understand that.
Just, just, so let's say this goes through, and the intention is to push all the houses in North Ruckle over and create a green space, is that right? So if, if that's the case, will, will homeowners be, and not for lack, but are nickel and dime in terms of, if my house is going to get pushed over, and I've got some improvements in it that I want to take with me, if the city all of a sudden becomes the owner of my house, am I going to get sort of nickel and dime in terms of, in terms of the value that I'm taking? To me, it seems silly to push over a house that's got lots of good stuff in it, but if the city owns it, is the city then going to go, oh, we're going to salvage the stuff out of this house? Is that the intention?
I'm not going to get into that level of detail. I really understand the question you're asking, but this forum is not going to deal with that today.
Something to think about.
Yes, absolutely it is. I think that's the sensitivity we want to happen here at the ground level.
And that only makes sense to try and get as much value out of anything as possible because then it is going to be taken down.
That would be part of the negotiations, I would think.
But clearly, our philosophical commitment here is to get you as much as possible for your, your house. Okay, folks, we are nearing 10 o'clock, and we have a full gallery outside waiting to get in. Can we wrap this up with a motion by council to move this forward to tonight? It's already on the agenda, but do we need to formalize that with a motion to move it forward to tonight? The motion is the one that Councilor Krag was reading. Can we have a seconder for that motion, or Councilor Corle? Further discussion on it, it will be a chance tonight, as Councilor Krag has asked, to get into some of the detail of that that we're not able to now.
Could I just ask that the motion perhaps include that, the idea that it doesn't preclude further investigations? Could that somehow be encapsulated in?
Can we add that to tonight if it's felt that we're not covering that in terms of what we're, what we're going to decide tonight?
We could make that as a separate motion.
We could make that as a separate motion. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, carried? Okay, we're moving forward.
There is another question.
I have a question. You're saying we're going to have these small meetings. When are we going to be notified? Like, I mean, we're all trying to live our lives, move on, and to have made plans, and then you guys say, oh, by the way, this important meeting is on this date, if I'm in another community. I mean, I need to be able to plan. So we need inclusion in the planning.
Through the mayor, absolutely. So what, what we're thinking about with exactly that, people might be living elsewhere, or, you know, not be able to come in the daytime, or not be able to come in the evening, so we're thinking about having a regular series, like a series of time slots, and people register and, and come for what works for them and for their interests. So we might have a time slot to talk about this discussion of purchasing a property and/or land trading, as, as you've identified. We might have another one looking at how do we get affordable rental that meets my needs? So, you know, people would come to the things that, that fit for them the most. I think that we're probably going to be discussing this for the next month.
Okay, but when are you going to announce that, does that's my question?
This week.
You're going to announce this this week, so we'll know.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation, and I know there's so many more questions we need to get to. I'm going to call a short recess, then we're going to bring in some of the other gallery that's outside, so five minutes. We mentioned that we've got a pretty tight agenda today, and I want to keep things moving along here. We have four presentations, and I know that on the request of council, we have asked to talk to Mr. Zepke, so they will be the fourth item, and so staying to tight timelines in your presentation would really be appreciated. And the first up is Destination Grand Forks Team. Here on.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for listening to us today. I'm Amara Saveloff, I'm the chairperson of the Downtown Business Association, and Jeff Pharo from Boundary, Boundary, Chamber of Commerce, and we're both on the Rural Dividend Funds Steering Committee. So we would like to present to you today Roger Brook's Action Plan and the First Steps for 2019. So first up is Create the Discover Grand Forks Team. We met on Friday with the initial group who will form the Destination Grand Forks Team. So the objective of this team is to promote tourism, events, and downtown activities, the selection committee for the wayfinding signs, to promote our trails, and then as well for brand leadership. And then the next step for Grand. So we're going to like roll through here quickly. So the next item is to activate a young professionals group. We would like to ask the mayor to appoint a council member under 40 years old to head up this group.
We've only one candidate.
This, this group of young professionals, one of them will have a seat at the Discover Grand Forks Team. The next after that is make intersection of second and market a four-way stop. I understand that there's already been some work done on this from council. Great idea, we would really love to see it happen as soon as possible. Fourth is the purchase of pots, planters, and benches. This is by the businesses of, by the businesses downtown, and so far, many businesses have already started this. We are working to get a larger group of people to do it. Hopefully, we can get a load of topsoil and some donations of plants, and then we can get pretty much every business on market and all throughout the entire downtown to have plants in front of their stores. The next one is the hiring of an economic development professional. We are hoping to work with Community Futures on this through the Rural Dividend Grant that the city received, as well as the one that Community Futures applied for, to hire a professional that can facilitate the right retail mix downtown to make Market Street a entertainment street, to attract businesses that will stay open later than six o'clock, and have a vibrant downtown. The next up is, we would like for council to consider adopting the Market District downtown as a, an official designated area. This would allow signage on the highway to point to the Market District, and it would allow us to have specific bylaws in this district to focus on, what is it called? You know, entertainment or?
Yeah, zoning for hours and various things.
So this would be the boundaries of Market District, and the star in the middle is actually Market and Third. Peter Matheson has been drawing up some plans on how to make that intersection a little bit more interesting, especially with the mural we hope to have on the side of the Davis So develop a website, I'll let Jeff talk for that.
Sure, yeah, so part of the Discover Grand Forks, one of the first things we'll put out is sort of a local tourism website. It's, it's a basic, Grand Forks, you might have a couple stories, like five best places to hike, something about the river, and then a little directory of places to eat, places to sleep, and then an events calendar, and I think Chamber of Commerce and the DVA and the city, everyone's sort of been trying to do that, and I think everyone's on the same page to try to funnel it into one, like, hey, this is where you can figure some stuff out about Grand Forks. We have shopped out some quotes, and we're already getting that one going. And so the group that we're forming would own the website, and there was some question if it was a city thing or not, but it's, ideally, this is a sort of a tourism group, it's local, that forms and stays after this grant comes and goes, and will manage stuff like the website.
The next up is design, print, and distribute the Very Best of Grand Forks brochure. This would be basically our top 10 businesses in Grand Forks to highlight what we have to offer, so that's something we definitely want to have done for, by the end of the year. And then to snail mail that brochure, we are hoping the city would allow us to include them in a utility bill distribution. So it's my understanding that Daniel is working, or just, how do I put it? He's exploring options with the Rural Dividend Funding Stream that's open right now to, to be able to pay for a wayfinding plan, not the signs, to have a comprehensive plan. For the wayfinding signs is key. It, it would give us the appropriate size, the appropriate location, it would give us the plan so that the city could implement those signs in, say, a 10-year timeline. The next one up is develop and implement downtown bylaws that plays into the Market District. It would give direction on how signs should look in specific areas. It would, it would cover the retail mix to make sure that we can have an entertainment district on Market Avenue, so we would hope to work with the city planning.
Does your plans include a designated smoking section in downtown areas?
No. It could, but it doesn't.
It is basically to work with planning department to develop all those bylaws. So then to develop the Grand Forks community profile, I understand that this has been done quite a few years ago, and it needs to be updated, and we. And we've talked with Community Futures because this seems to fall within something that they have done before and would be a bit of recreating. And then begin the local development of a bike-friendly town. With our meeting on Friday, we got the consensus with the bike groups that we can promote Grand Forks as BC's bike-friendliest city.
Art B. Steel, Chris.
What's Roslin, sorry, what's Roslin's bike designation?
Mountain Bike.
Mountain Bike capital.
So we want to be the bike-friendliest. So with our Trans-Canada Trails, from what we understand, it's e-bike friendly, and we have the things here for all ages and all fitness types for biking. So we've got a bit more mountain biking, we've got the DMX, we've got the trails, all sorts of things for...
I biked once when I moved here. Rails ain't August, that ended my biking career. Pete's though.
Next up would be develop trails maps. I think I read a Facebook post from Councilor Moslin that you were updating some of the mapping you've done.
I have been working on Trail Forks, yeah. It's a bit of a learning curve. But yeah, but I'm working on it. Yeah, let's just leave it at that.
I think ideally, like the website we're talking about, that spooned and combination stuff, down the road, once all that stuff's started, we also did trail maps and tie all that stuff in, but down the road. What's this? Okay, contract for a grand-specific marketing program. Basically, the, we sort of actually threw up the idea that it might be called Discover Grand Forks or Destination Grand Forks, but to hire with the RDFA a little bit of funds, basically to get a basic brand going of this, because we were going to jump in on the website, but you have to figure out, you know, a nice local logo, colors and stuff like that. So we have a RFQ that's going to go out in the next week or so for that as well. Basically, just to build the brand of what it will look like for. And ideally, brochures and everything we make would sort of have this sort of similar thing, and maybe it will tie into the city a little bit. And again, it's brought that up, if it could look like one. Yeah.
Mayor, can I just interject here just a bit of a... Trails are really important to people, especially Canadians, right? Canadians connect to this landscape with their trails. The trouble is, we don't all like the same kind of trails, right? The wonderful thing about this region is that we have a wealth of different kinds of trails. And you've had some wonderful volunteer groups work to develop and promote those trails, right? Whether it's the Road Biking Club, the Mountain Biking Club, the Community Trail Society, or the ATV Group. A great deal of work has gone into mapping, promoting, and local trails. I guess, like, I guess my bit of advice is try to be inclusive.
Yeah, so the Destination Grand Forks team does have a Trail Association there, we have the Mountain Bike Club there. I don't think that, I know the ATV Group exists, they're not at our table right now. But, and I think we brought into biking is something everyone can relate to, hopefully it ties into the trails is what it's going to be, that's what we have, right? But it's sort of the marketing thing that Roger Brooks was throwing, I'm saying, don't be something for everyone. Pin down that you have great biking, but understand that it's your trail network.
I understand that.
So we want, we want everyone there. We want all those trail maps to be one spot.
So we're going to change the tagline to pedal down.
Crap, that was another one. Sorry to slow you down there.
Sorry, this is pretty much it anyway, so we've gone through some... Yeah, pedal down.
Pedal down.
Gotcha.
And yeah, last thing on our list for 2019 is a brand presentation to the council and other stakeholders. That's it?
Yeah. Just a breakdown of Roger's plan, I know there's a lot there. I think in year one, there's only one or two things for the city. I know we're all one group with Daniel, and I think I said this spinning for a second, there's no way we could do all this stuff, but between Destination Grand Forks and the Chamber and the DVA, I think we can knock most of that stuff off, but the stop sign and the district.
Yeah, congratulations for the momentum you're keeping on this.
Thanks.
It's not just us, it's the entire city that's helping, so it's appreciated by everybody.
Can we get a copy of your slides?
Can we, can we put it, can we accept the proposal, accept the report, Councilor? And get it on record, and then we'll, at this point, we'll be moving forward on those recommendations and dealing with them one at a time, probably.
Yeah, so there's actually only three that we need the city to consider out of this entire sixteen. The first one would be the stop sign at the intersection of Market and Second. The other one would be officially adopt the Market District. And the last would be what Daniel's already working on, and that is contract for a wayfinding system and design.
Perfect.
We have to do the bylaws as well, to tie into the market.
Sure, let's get this report on the table, Councilor Thompson makes the motion, second Councilor Corlant. This is the beginning, but you've moved ahead really quickly, so let's not be the ones that slow you down, got those three that you're recommending. So this is accepting the report and the recommendations?
I think Daniel has.
Could we also get the council maybe tonight to appoint one of the councilors maybe to the Discover Grand Forks group? I believe the bylaws are being worked on, right, and for the society forming. Now this councilor should be a liaison and maybe somebody that's really first in the trails network, as a suggestion.
You're going to kill him.
We're also having two staff on this as well, so one from the planning side and one currently from corporate because of this whole economic development side, but the council appointment would be great.
All right, including that in your motion.
What about the under forty?
Yeah.
If you're down for a little...
We can work, we'll find someone who's really immature. Okay, motion's on the table to accept the report. All those in favor, well done, good work.
Thank you.
And Amber, if you could get a copy of those slides or...
Daniel has them, yeah.
So the next up is Flipping Gymnastics, and Swetlana has promised me she would keep it tight, and again, we're working with the group outside that's waiting to come in, so let's hear your pitch.
Okay, thank you. Just a white sheet, if I can...
Yep.
Good morning, council and city staff. Thank you for having us. We're here representing Flipping Fund Gymnastics. We're youth thrive. We're also incorporating Roger Brooks' recommendations and working with Discover BC. We also sit on that committee, and our first meeting was last Friday. So we're here representing gymnastics. We support Bike Town BC, and we're looking for a public partner, public sector, private sector partnership with a common interest. My name is Swetlana, I'm a volunteer leadership team at Flipping Fund, and we are committed to establishing a sustainable nonprofit gymnastics program in BC, Grand Forks BC, and why, because they're worth it. I also work as a registered twelve-care nurse in Crystal Lake, and I've been a longtime resident of Grand Forks. And this is Claire, she also sits on the board with me. I'm a mother to gymnasts, and I don't have to travel out of town now for gymnastics. I don't have to go to Calcigar and spend my money there. I get to stay in Grand Forks and have my children and my family, and I get to spend my money in Grand Forks, and my family now gets to reconnect with their local peers. So on the note of Roger Brooks, we thought, just for kind of giggles, we thought, don't settle, just move. We're really trying to encourage activity in all ages across the lifespan. We want to have an active community, where health and wellness across the lifespan is a key focus. So we are a nonprofit organization. We support the healthy growth and development of children and families delivered through gymnastics and mainly human connections. And we are a committed group to looking for a sustainable gymnastics program in BC. We are located currently at the Curling Ring. We have a fantastic website that was donated to us. So gymnastics, who are we? Foremost, we are focused on the youth, health, and wellness. We are multi-use as well. We've realized that we need to broaden our scope and make this multi-age and multi-use. We're part of Gymnastics BC. They are our provincial governing body. They have supplies with our insurance and our standards, which are very important to us. We're committed, adaptive, resilient, and we are an advocate group. We want to be here around with community focus, and we are nonprofit. So we focus on movement, social connection, mind-body conditioning, fail forward, sense of achievement. We want to be a device-free zone, and we can talk about that more later. We are accountable, respectable, and we value community engagement a lot. Gymnastics BC is located in Vancouver. They have an annual budget of $2.1 million, and they have quite a supportive staff. And again, insurance, historically gymnastics has failed in BC, in Grand Forks, sorry, because the insurance was not obtained. So we're currently, we meet their standards, and there's aid zones in BC, and we're considered Zone One. And there you go, there's the Coonies, and the third one down, Flipping Fund Gymnastics, and we're part with Creston, Kimberley, Kicking Horse. So when competitions happen, we're going to be with this zone, and we're hoping to one day bring competitions to Grand Forks. So we are two paid coaches, five volunteer coaches, and we're over ninety gymnasts. We opened our doors in May, we've been doing this since two years, and we're supporting our local coaches that are living here, working here. We had a skill set, and we had a need. People were traveling out of town for gymnastics, and we wanted to stop that and make it our own. We have six board members, and our program is about our kids. So we have very tight groups. There you can see the names and the ages of our groups, and we opened in May at the Curling Ring, and we had over a hundred gymnasts. And our summer program currently has eighty. So right now, our two gymnasts, Violet and Jordan, are going to hand out our financial statements to you. We feel that it's important to be transparent about that. We have a great treasure of the Ad Harris, they free that's for us. So where does our money come from? Well, mainly our participant fees. We also have subsidy programs through Gymnastics BC, so we can support people who cannot pay for gymnastics, because yes, gymnastics is expensive, but you're paying for a large building and certified skill packages. We have grants that we're applying for. We do lots of fundraising, donations, and businesses and personal have been very generous, and personal seed startup funding, and we have two accounts here, CMC and the Credit Union. So here we are at our Flipping Ninja Boys. I want to take you right into the Curling Ring, and this is our program. We have a lot of boys in gymnastics, so we're breaking that stereotype that gymnastics is not only for girls. So here you go, here's the boys. They love it, they enjoy it. There's our coach Alyssa. Coach Alyssa, can you just raise your hand? There you go. So this is our Aerials, our older girls. So as you can tell, they're having fun, they're moving, they're connecting socially. At the start, that specific group wanted to bring in their devices, and we encouraged them not to, and we got some pushback, but at the end, we were happy for them. So our eleven-twelves, our nine-and-tens, we have volunteer coaches, we have a mentorship program happening, the older ones are teaching the younger ones. There's our little side, device-free zone, please clean up after yourself. Our Twisters, this is probably our biggest core group, we have probably about twenty-six very motivated, very talented gymnasts. Our coaches are surprised, actually, about how much talent we have here, and we have a ton of parent and tots. So here you go. And we have the parents engaging with the children. And we have a kid's PlayStation for those that aren't in gymnastics, and we have a first aid station. So safety is really important for us, and there is some parent and tots. So we always want to be offering something new. In July, we started our summer program, we added adults, seniors, special needs, private lessons, birthday parties, and Aboriginal teachings. So the BC government actually is just injecting money into seniors gymnastics all across BC. So seniors gymnastics is about a lot of falls prevention, strength training, stretching. We're working with Indigenous groups, currently we're working with Coins and Ice Park, and we're hoping to put on an Aboriginal program in August at the Curling Ring. We are right on the community, we have had a lot of support, this is our candidate celebration, this is our Board of Directors, we all come with a very special skill set, and we are a very strong board. This is our latest board. You may recognize that guy in the middle on the beam there. We have a lot of community support, you know, everything from healthcare to child and youth mental health, to adult mental health, Indigenous. Boundary Family Services has been a really great helping stone, point for us. School District 51 has donated a lot of their mats, we're working with them on different levels, exercise specialist, and the city has been very, very helpful as well, along with her face-based communities. Here we go, here's Aerials, there's Violet, she's in the very front and center, and Jordan is there somewhere. So this is our up and coming, these are where a lot of our coaches are going to come from, and they're going to keep our program alive. So our top three things that we want to do, we want to establish a central and permanent location, which is why we're here today asking for your help. We want to support current coaches and recruit future coaches, which is what we're doing, and we want to always be mindful of like-minded other organizations who want to be partnering. So we're currently at the Curling Ring, and they have been very accommodating, and the GFRECK has helped us with registration, that's how much we're paying currently, $12.16 a month. After that, we, October 1st, we head up to Pines BiLocamp. We have pounded the pavement super hard and diligent to try find a building that's more centrally located, but to find a building that's ceiling height is twenty feet high to support your insurance requirements has proven difficult. Here's our coaches. So I delved into the history, it's important to find out why something has failed in the past. So coaches were not well-supported, so we're doing our best to support our coaches, and they are our assets. So we have two paid coaches, two recently certified coaches, and lots of up and coming coaches. So that's Alyssa Stark, here she is at her graduation. We fundraised a club car for her, and she's going to be committed to us while she's doing her education. So we support the youth. Our head coach, Amanda, she is a twenty-year veteran in gymnastics, so she is a huge core to our program. And we do pay our coaches, this is not a volunteer coaching position. Potential coaches, we have resumes coming from all over the world, Yevgen would like to come here with his family. Coaches in training, there they are. Sorry, and we reach out to the community. So fundraising, for example, we're in Canada Fest, we're doing the fifty-fifty draw, so we raised a lot of money through the community. We're working with John from Savon, he's been very supportive. There's our Canada Day Parade. Am I taking too long?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So why are we doing this? Well, there's a need for gymnastics, and we support youth and social connections. How are we doing this? Well, we have a huge supporting body. There's a lot of mental health illness in our town, and we want to bring that to light. And what are we doing about it? Well, the management committee, Boundary Family Services, School District, and the Street Child and Family Development, and Gymnastics wants to be a part of that. I encourage you to look into this research. Doug Lacy, the Director of Learning, has presented the vulnerabilities of our children in the boundary, and the vulnerabilities are a lot higher than the provincial average. So it looks all health and wellness. So can I go back? A lot of the community support, I just want to bring Jeff's slide to the attention. So he's saying, "On behalf of myself, family, roots, and wings, I want to sincerely thank this organization for bringing such a well-organized, structured, and needed program to our community. Being a newer resident, our main reservation in moving here was access to safe, holy, structured programs for our daughter. Flipping Fund is helping to close this much-known small gap," and he's hoping the city and RDKB can help us with that. So more support and letters. There's been a huge link to mental health and devices, so we're trying to get away from the device, from devices. Well-being, the social determinants for health are important to us. So we were invited to the stakeholder committee for the community center project. We're hoping that we can be considered in that. We've looked far and wide for a permanent home, including the USCC Home. We've looked far and wide for a permanent home, including the USCC Hall and the Deco Transfer Building. All have fallen not successful for a variety of reasons. So we would like to, we would like to ideally build a building on a piece of land. This is our ideal criteria. Centrally located is our highest priority, with 20-foot-high ceilings, adequate square footage, separate spaces for all groups. We want to be able to drill the whole floor, hang equipment for the ceiling. We want to make it our own. So this is a drawing courtesy of Gary Swift from Horizon North. Gary's from Calgary. He came down on Saturday, and we've been showing him around. Horizon North is currently the builder of our affordable housing project. So this is just a concept building that we are looking at. And there you go. So we want to be all-inclusive. We want to be inclusive. We want to be multi-use year-round, with gymnastics being the heart of it, and we want to include Jazercise, CrossFit, yoga, martial arts, and dryland training for possible sports. So we feel that these longstanding businesses are strong community members, and they too are looking for a home, and we want to stop working in silos. We want to start working together more. So where do we put this building? Well, that's why we're here today, to see if there's a location that we would be considered for. Just around town, looking ideally, it would be between the state park and the swimming pool. We realize there's City Land there and possibly some RDKB land. I realize that the community gardens are there, that's something maybe we can partner on if they're into that. We can get our gymnast kids to help with the gardens. What about next to the affordable housing project? Are there any lots there? And the structure would be a public-private partnership. So public sector, private sector, meaning the common interest, and the common interest would be raising the bar for youth and health wellness in the town, along with the adults. So I just wanted to comment, you know, one year ago, we were in flood mode, and we had amazing community spirit. So one year later, gymnastics is doing gymnasts there, and we want to continue with that spirit, because we know we have that spirit in us, and we want to continue on that. We want to be part of the reconstruction phase, a new beginning for Grand Forks. I just want to thank the city and the RDKB and all the people writing the grants to get us to where we are today. We are an amazing, resilient community. We're going to have lots of things that lead up to our success. And this is my last slide. This is kind of what it encompasses. We want to support the future. So there's, on the left, there's Avery Sebastian. Want to support families. There's Avery with her mom, Kayla, and we want to support the growth and revitalization of the downtown business core and Destination Grand Forks. So thank you, city, for the consideration.
And you know you have council's support. You've made yourself very successful in the community and appreciated by a lot of people. And so I would accept a motion to receive your report, Councilor Corlick, Councilor Thompson. The report itself is delivering us an awful lot of excitement here in terms of having that kind of facility. I think there's some practical things council will consider on this, but you put it on the table. You're looking for a site. I'm also assuming this private-public partnership is something that you have in the works that you're working on. So council will look seriously at the considerations you've put in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of accepting your report? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good question. Is it a Davis Bill? I know that it's a building in town that used to have a dance hall.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not?
Upstairs, it was the song called...
I think the fact that this would be purpose-built would be what you're looking for here. You don't have to put things away that are staying drilled into the floor. I can see a picture of it.
And we wouldn't be here today asking if we were able to find a suitable building. So for the last two years, we have looked at everything, cranny, and something has always fallen short. So this has been our best option.
The Scho Hall used to be when my kids were little, did gymnastics there, but that's not going to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item of business is that we have Sheila Walker as a delegation wishing to make comments. Sheila, are you here?
I think she doesn't know.
Council, you've read Sheila's letter. We'll be asking her to repeat it then.
Right.
She's not in the hallway, however. One of the emails that came in over the weekend from, that came to Kevin McKinham, was regarding if she's not in attendance, because council's still going to talk about...
Okay, all right. So Sheila's not here. Council, do you wish to respond to this letter?
Yeah, I didn't make it.
Councilor Maslow?
Just briefly, Your Worship, my understanding that this situation, that sort of request that we consider amendments to the zoning bylaw, well, that's exactly what we're about. We have instructed our staff to do exactly that and come back in September with adjustments to the zoning bylaw to include social agencies. I can't remember the actual wording of the instruction. But I was just going to reassure Ms. Walker is that, well, we're on it.
And you're talking plural there. We're looking at bylaws, plural.
Yes.
That we're looking at. We could certainly reassure her that bylaws in general are being addressed, and her specific request may or may not. She's looking for some retroactivity on our actions here.
Yes.
So council move to accept a letter? Councilor Corlick, Councilor Studeley, all those in favor? Okay, and moving to the next item, which is Whispers of Hope, who are here on request of council from, I think, three or four weeks ago?
Was it VC Housing?
Yes, they were, and I have not heard any response from VC Housing. We requested at various levels that they also... Daniel?
Yeah, I mentioned to council in the email that the housing at this point was not wanting to participate in this discussion. I'll play down and say a funding debate.
Right, if we find a location...
Okay.
They're not...
Just wait a second here. Do we get everybody seated? I think we've got some people coming in.
Should this one slide up front?
I've been waiting since I have long.
Okay, we're just about seated here. That's about it. All right. You're on. Could identify yourselves for the minute?
My name is Dwayne Foster, and with me is Melissa Shogun, and we're the chairperson of Whispers of Hope, and Melissa is the coordinator.
Put the mic closer than the mouse, please. It's going to be pointing right at you.
Mr. Mayor and honorable councilors, we're here today to address a bylaw that has been imposed upon our warming center, that we keep people alive and keep them fed and give them a place to stay. And certainly, with your cooperation and with your help, we can continue to make this a viable entity in our community. There is no reason why we shouldn't take care of the misfortunes, the homeless, under-deprived people in our community. Every community has them, and lots of communities take care of them, and those communities are thriving. Lots of communities that don't take care of the homeless and take care of people in a bad way usually have problems. And it's like the heart of our community, if we take care of some people that need help, that doesn't mean we condone what they do, but they have a right to live, they have a right to be in this community, and most of them here certainly have grown up here, and a lot of them have situations where things have happened in their life that may or may not have contributed by themselves. And so I really would like yous to consider removing that bylaw as one of the things that Abbotsford and Victoria found the bylaw is unconstitutional. So I would like yous to really remove that situation so that we can have a stool like with three legs, where we can all be partners, the city, Whispers of Hope, and our province. Our funding comes from our province, and it doesn't impact our immediate people in our own town. So I want to read some of the positive things that have happened within there. We just become on, I come on the board about a month and a half, two months ago, and the board voted to take on the warming center in a full-fledged capacity in order to maintain it and work with it. Before that, VC Housing was doing most of the work, and we were just there as a society to use our number in order to have it, so that we could end up having a warming center that took care of people throughout the winter. And that's when it was started, this last fall towards December. And since this time, I want to kind of go through some of the things that are very positive to our community, and I believe that we should be really considering the positive things in our community and not listening to all the negative things, because a lot of the negative things are taken out of context. Not only that, if we listen to 30 to 100 people out of 4,000 or 5,000 people, and some of them aren't even in our community, we're making decisions not for all of our community, but for just a few of us. And I think it's important that we really listen to our people that are sometimes a little bit silent, and that why should we always be listening to the ones that screw the lawyers? Anyways, the report, since January 1st, 2019, housed a total of 40 people overnight, 13 women, 27 men. We also provided services to 15 to 20 people per day, with an average of 12 people per night. Our services include food, shower, laundry, socializing with staff and other guests and visitors. We have employed 22 support workers, 22 support workers in our community. Eight employees have left the warming center due to housing, as well as making new life choices. Presently, I have 13, we have 13 employees, including our coordinator. The warming center supports many businesses in Grand Forks, to name a few: Bylaw, Extra Foods, Savon, More, Home Hardware, and many other contractors and restaurants. We shop locally. Staff spends their paycheck in our tunnel. Staff has participated in training. First aid, mental health first aid, Noxen training, the escalating training through mental health and addictions, brief action planning, and right now, today, there's a trauma course that's being held. And I do believe there's a fair amount of people that are taking that, partaking in that, and those that are here will probably join. This may be come from Vancouver to put this on, and so we intend on attending that after. Training is an ongoing thing within the Whispers of Hope. Whispers of Hope provides harm reduction supplies that we receive from interior health. We have a number of guests start the methadone program through their doctor. Staff is working with a number of guests to help them apply for identification, so that they can be qualified for social assistance and other things, to get a job. Staff has helped a few guests apply for social assistance and have helped for getting jobs. I just talked to one individual yesterday. He's managed to get to, or he's going on his way to Sissoias in order to get some work. We have a volunteer to help guests with their income tax. We have guests at the warming center that are working part-time jobs in our community on a daily basis. They are able to return to the center and shower, have a meal, get rest, and work the following day. It's not all about drugs. They are trying. And with your help, we can get that better in our community. Nobody says that we can do it in a slap of the hand. Staff is working with a number of guests to help them apply for... We have guests at the warming center that are working part-time jobs in our community, like I was saying. They are able to return to the center on a daily basis. Guests help out with chores. I have had, or we have had guests give us cash to help with the groceries. We have had even some of the workers help make meals. The RCMP have been at the warming center and have seen that we don't have a bike shop shop in the back. They have also checked bikes and have found none, found none that were any, that were stolen. And the staff works, and the staff works with the RCMP, and they are always welcome. We don't condone stealing or storing stolen belongings at the warming center. We ask all guests not to use drugs or alcohol at the warming center, and we're imposing stronger rules and whatnot since we started, since Whispers of Hope started a month and a half ago. Our coordinator has asked all the guests to leave if they fail to abide by these rules. Living community, community, community has many challenges, while some people believe we are enabling our guests. I assure we are dealing with people that have many issues. Yes, there is drug addiction, but there is also mental health, trauma, depression, homelessness, and hopelessness. There is not one single person at the warming center who wants to be in this situation. They have found community support, they found community supports them, and they still need people to have empathy and love. They need our support to help themselves. And I'll let Melissa read, because I get a little bit...
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship, for inviting us to speak today. It is unfortunate that it has taken as long as it has. There have already been many conversations about us, without us. What can we say when minds have already been made up? When misinformation and hate has already permeated the conversation so thoroughly? I hear the questions asked a lot lately, do we even need this? And that's in terms of a lot of things, a year-round shelter, supportive housing, even a soup kitchen. Our town doesn't need these things, all we're doing is building up so people can come from elsewhere. And to that, I say, open your eyes. Thanks to the media, the world is seeing our woes, seeing us struggle, seeing the needs and yet we remain oblivious. Even before our most recent disaster, our town has always struggled economically and residents make do the best they can to stay in the place that they love. There has never been a busload of homeless people brought to town despite how juicy the rumors seem to be. People who are struggling are from here, have roots here, have family and friends here and frankly belong here as much as anyone else. What is Whispers of Hope? A group of citizens volunteering their time compelled by compassion to make a positive change in their hometown. This is an organization with a legacy over twenty years now, taking what little resources are available and distributing them amongst the citizens who are having the hardest time. We take time for everyone that walks through our doors and yes, we have rules and we expect people to remain respectful. Thankfully, even people in some of the roughest conditions are quite a pleasure to get to know. There's always going to be people that break the rules and act out and if things can't be resolved, unfortunately, there's no help that we can offer them. Honestly, it's a handful of people, all with unique situations, that cause all the commotion. It would be nice to have a conversation about what happens in these unique scenarios that garner all the attention. When you can't ship someone off to jail or an asylum or to another town, how do we as a society cope? And how do we treat them? There's a lot of unnecessary fear out there, but there is also a lot of valid concerns as well. So let's take the time for that and bring all heads to the table. We came specifically to talk about Donaldson Drive, but as you can see, the situation is bigger than that. It is worrisome that a loud group of residents can hold more clout than any professionals in their field. This is why we feel decisions are being hastily made and that consequences aren't being considered. Have you talked to other support service agencies? You definitely didn't speak to us. How about interior health? The neighborhood isn't happy and we get it. Any neighborhood with an eccentric, loud, intimidating neighbor isn't happy. Anytime folks in the neighborhood have come to us directly, we take the time to hear their situations and find solutions, make compromises or perhaps even stipulate what our guests are going to have to do or not do to remain staying there. I can assure you that opportunity is not present for other situations with nuisance neighbors and it definitely won't be the case if these people are dispersed and staying wherever they can. We are supposed to compel you to change your minds, but honestly, I don't think it can be done. I can tell you that these and other services are definitely needed. There are no affordable housing options in town. Everywhere has wait lists, even the warming center currently has more heads than beds and they're doing what they can. I can tell you that most people will not leave. This is their home. Now you will be seeing people back on the riverbanks and in our public parks. You have not addressed the real issues that people are concerned with, drugs and crime. You are not only putting those people back on the streets, you're pushing them into the faces of other residents who already can't tolerate them. And that brings me to my next point, discrimination and intolerance. Both these things are seemingly rampant in our town and on Facebook. The hate and lies outweigh the legitimate concerns as people encourage violence towards those who are the worst offenders. The petty thieves and the drug addicts, that's what everyone's afraid of. We are villains because we associate with them, because we get close to them and perhaps even help them if they can follow the rules. These people are people and deserve a chance just like anyone else. Problem is, most of them have burned their bridges, even with us, and yet they are still around. So now it's okay to harass them, to slander them, to physically attack them as well as anyone that may associate with or even look similar to. I get why people lean towards vigilante justice. Solutions aren't being found soon enough and they are scared and frustrated. We don't condone any of it from either side and really tensions just keep building. So when will we talk about the real issues? I'm not here to tell you we're doing everything right or that we have all the answers. I'm actually here today to call to question the conduct of councilors, the recklessness of the decision-making and their inability to work with people beyond just talking about them. We learned a new term last week that I think councilors should familiarize themselves with, misfeasance in public office. This is basically when the laws are being followed and enforced to such an extent as they actually cause harm. Your bylaws are not well-defined and are not robust enough to include every situation that arises. With your current park use bylaws the way they are, there's nowhere that people are allowed to camp, which negates the reason they were written. People have a right to be somewhere. Without a shelter made available and with your park use bylaws being unreasonable, this will warrant individuals the right to camp in any public park they see fit. It is also safer for them to camp together. So you will have a looming homeless camp on your hands. You will also be faced with the same hard decisions as last November. What do we do when people start dying in the cold? What zoning bylaw exceptions will you make then and which neighborhoods will you create an uproar in? Why didn't the warming center close in April like everyone wanted? Because it didn't have to. For the first time, our community was given the funding and opportunity to help people for more than just twelve hours a day in the most inhospitable time of year. We could offer beds, a shower, laundry and didn't have to send them back to the riverbanks and parks. When the opportunity is there, who wouldn't take it? I want you to know that even though we have been taking things month to month and the possibility of closing has been present since April, that we are still working on improvements. How can we do better? What policies need to be better enforced? And how can we support our staff and offer training so they can deal with the situations that arise? I expect us to still do strategic planning sessions whether there is a location available or not. This is not an easy project to oversee, let alone operate and whether there's a location or, and after seven months, we are obviously still working out the camps. This will need to happen all over again if or when another agency takes over and I hope they are offered more patience and cooperation. Donaldson Drive was a short-term solution. Even if we were offered another eight months as alluded to, we would still be packing it up in the end. However, that time could be spent working with other agencies and community groups to work out these details. It may have gotten us through another winter. Perhaps there is still a chance to salvage this opportunity while it exists, but we will have to leave that up to council now. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you both very, very much.
(applause).
Counselor Krog, then Counselor Corle.
Just a couple of things. And you were talking about vigilante action. I've seen posts where people are saying, I get a baseball bat, all I crap, right? So what has happened so far? How many people have been the victim of the vigilanteism?
I know two.
Okay. The, oh, okay, misfeasance, that's interesting because you have a judgment from Pivot Legal and a lawyer named something that said that our actions to enforce our bylaws are illegal, that we are committing misfeasance and that we violated the Charter of Rights, which is a legal section seven. So I know later I'm gonna request that our lawyers ask them for what all those decisions or judgments were based on. And you mentioned lies. So you come here or people come here and they want to work with us, but in the background, they're doing stuff like this. Now here's, here's an actual question. Is it true that a counselor came to the shelter, asked them questions and that as a group you wanted to take out a protective order, make a restraining order against them and the mayor talked you out of it?
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Yes, a counselor did come to the warming center. We've also had councilors go to some of our board members in their workplace to speak with them. And it was brought forward at a, you know, board meeting, how inappropriate that may or may not be, how we should address these situations. I mean, while somebody had mentioned that, hey, if this harassment continues, that is something that perhaps should be looked at and not a single person was interested in doing that. So while it was talked about as a possibility, nobody thought that that was in any way going to be a healthy situation for any of us. And when I talk about coming to counsel for help and cooperation, I've been employed now for a couple of years and I've been reaching out to councilors, prior councilors, yourself included, to be involved with, hey, where would be a good location for the kitchen? We're struggling to find one. Where's your input? With absolutely no response. So yes, as of last week, we did seek legal counsel and really it wasn't because we're interested in pursuing anything legally. We really did just want to inform ourselves and I would suggest that you do the same. I think it is important for you to know the ramifications.
Okay. Just one.
Counselor, I think.
No, one, sorry. Just to finish and then I'll shut up. Like that disturbs me that there was even a conversation that somebody asked some questions and you want to take out a protective order. Those are designed to save lives. They're a lot of times used by women fleeing violence and because somebody asked you questions, you think or even discuss that that would be a reasonable use. It's not a toy.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have a back and forth on who said what in this situation.
Well, no, I was just asking.
Yes, I know you were, but certainly if we get into the behavior of an individual in that situation, we're limiting debate. Counselor Thompson, moving on. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Corle. I'm rooting.
I just want to ask a question. Can you define warming center versus shelter, please?
Yeah. Really, warming center is just a name, like Whispers of Hope, like Community Kitchen, like a thrift store. It's an operating name. It was chosen because the scope of the project was for the extreme winter weather and so that was a term thrown around. B C Housing is trying to avoid using the term shelter. They're kind of moving away from that to have it be more of a drop-in center because there are services provided to people who are not just staying there. So a drop-in center is most ideal, but I agree, the name is rather short-sighted and it doesn't really pertain to, oh, I mean, it has been storming, so it's been weather cold lately, but other than that, I agree, the name isn't really suitable to the operation.
Well, actually, my thoughts were warming center was to warm yourself, didn't mean necessarily that you're going to be moving in.
Originally, it was.
To be temporary, if you're not, exactly, that you're not to be there overnight. Like, I just don't understand.
Right. Well, I mean, there was a lot of process that happened with these projects. When this project was first brought forward, the space was supposed to just be a twenty-four hour center that people could come in and warm up from during the winter and that they could have, you know, coffee and tea, they could have a meal, that there would be some beds available if they need to sleep, but that really only was a necessity once we realized the Hotel Ninety-Nine project was no longer happening. So there was supposed to be some sort of supportive stay happening through an old hotel there and that support workers would be made available and people would be staying in those rooms. That fell short from happening and so the need for providing an actual shelter became present and that's what it had been since January when it opened up.
All right.
One last question, I'm sorry. How long is your, are you able to stay in a shelter? To me, that's all just temporary. It shouldn't be that, okay, you're here for three months or four months or whatever it is or two nights. So just exactly how does that work?
What is the policy?
Yes.
I'm actually not aware of the policy limiting how long somebody can be there. There are lots of supports in place so that somebody can find stable housing thereafter, but there isn't any opportunities in our town. So how would somebody transition from the shelter to affordable or supportive housing if it's not in place?
So I could live there for your rent? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, I don't think anyone would want to.
I know, but it's possible.
I think it would be potentially possible.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. The city is dealing with the property owners. And it's true, the property owner that, he was, they were advised that the operation that's at that location contributes our bylaw. No one objected, at least I certainly didn't, in the extreme weather for people to get out of the cold. But this has morphed into something more. It's never been discussed with council. There have been concerns expressed by residents in the city with respect to the operations there. I drive by at least once a day, sometimes twice a day, going, coming and going from town. I live in the area. There's been an addition added on to the back, on the east side. It looks like, almost like the living room has been set up on the north side and that certainly isn't permitted in the zoning for the area. So why you're here and not the property owner complaining on your behalf leaves me somewhat confused.
Because we invited them to come and attend this meeting.
Well, you did.
No, no, council made a motion.
Well, yeah, but we wanted B C Housing here too.
Yes, we didn't get votes, but we put the invitation out.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think we all know what your status is on this situation.
Excuse me, Counselor, what is my status on this situation?
You are in support of it, we'd like it to remain.
Actually, I have not stated that at this point, that I want to remain in that location.
Your actions, Your Worship, speak very, very loudly.
Which actions are those, Counselor?
In support.
In support in general of that group of disabled people in our community? Yes, I am.
Yeah, but that is not the appropriate place for them to be housed.
That is your opinion, yes, going with what you're saying and that's not the appropriate place for them.
No. And so why, why, it is here debating that specific issue and I don't know that that was the invitation to them to come in and just dock the boat at Donaldson Drive. I think your interest would be much better served by dealing with your landlord. Now, we have passed a night through, New Year Worship, to our staff. Have we, do we know when, when this place will be vacated?
Let me clarify, what I'm hearing from Melissa is not that they are arguing to stay in that location forever, they are talking about it as a temporary location and hope that we can hold something together until such time as the city can find a more appropriate place for this service if it is needed.
It's not up to the city to find that location.
Okay, that's a separate point.
We do not have the support in place with policing, with the medical community. I have talked to at least two doctors who are not in support of this.
Okay, Counselor, I'm going to ask Counselor Malaslan to update us on the status of the community social services committee that has just formed and had one meeting. On the table is a recommendation, one way or the other, in terms of what kind of shelter we would need, either a winter shelter, emergency winter shelter or a full-time shelter. So addressing those concerns that you have, I think is more appropriate at this point to that committee than at this point to this group.
Well, with respect, I think the committee is doing their work, but I don't think this is what the discussion is centering on this morning.
But I'm correcting you, I don't hear them saying they want to stay in this location. They are hoping to find a better location where the wraparound services that you're saying are missing could be adequately provided. By who? By the government. By the appropriate government.
I H A said no.
When did they say no to what? Right now, B.C. Housing is saying, let's get this clear, that they will support a year-round shelter. They've made it quite open and clear.
Where, when?
Where is the question?
No, but where and when did B.C. Housing says it'll support shelter?
B.C. Housing has been saying this to individuals...
I'm saying money speaks, and they've continued to provide funding as long as we have a building available. And so that in itself is support for year-round shelter. They're providing the funding for a year-round shelter.
I've seen government funding come and go, in a heartbeat.
Let's use it while it's there.
Yes, we have. Councillor, you have your hand up?
Yes. Maybe I'll let councillor Melaslin inform us about his committee.
Yes, councillor Melaslin, could you give us... It was in your report, I know.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, it's in my council report for tonight. The July 9 meeting of a community advisory group of social services, which had a spectrum of professionals, as well as concerned citizens, on those services in our community. As I say in my report, that committee is long overdue. And because, we find ourselves in this position because it was an ad hoc solution. We were grappling with November weather, and this looked like a quick opportunity to at least do something. And now we're, okay, now it's continued. It was an ad hoc solution. There is a lack of a permanent solution. That's what's missing here, okay? A permanent or long-term, sustainable solution. I have to make it clear, I agree with Melissa, that those people and the community are better served in whatever kind of shelter you can give them. You talk about the lack of services. Well, there are services attached to the building. B.C. Housing is paying for those services. I walked around the remains of a tent city this weekend. You all know the correspondence, I went and looked at it. Okay, you know, I... Do we want that? No, I sure don't want that. And let me tell you, there's lots of places to farm a tent city. Yeah, you chased it out of your parks, but you haven't chased it out of the region, that's for sure. It's all sorts, and city land. Anyhow, my point is, please, can we be patient? I ask you for Melissa's patience. Let's let a process work. Let's let the committee give us some advice. They'll give us some advice and recommendation, bring it to council, then council can decide. There isn't easy solution for this, really it was. And it goes back to our zoning bylaws. Our zoning bylaws are antiquated. I wonder, do you? They're old. We've asked for them to be updated, because a whole bunch of social services are showing up since they were written. Things like supportive housing, tent city, shelters, warming centers, community kitchens, didn't exist when that zoning bylaw was written. Here they are now. And before council is the opportunity to redo those zoning bylaws so they'll fit these issues. A simple solution would just make shelters be a secondary use for light industrial. We know. There it is, it's done. Whatever. Anyhow, Mayor, I have a great deal of... I want to say some more about this issue tonight during council.
Okay.
Because the other thing that really is procedure, I think that we have to take a look at procedure, and I want to bring it up as part of our business arising out of the minutes tonight. Anyhow, that's for tonight. So basically, I tried to update you on the July 9 meeting. They're going to meet again on August 13th, okay? The warming center, or emergency shelter, or year-round shelter is on the table for discussion with that group. It will have ramifications to that decision for all the agencies sitting around that group, which includes, you know, the RCT, Interior, and all. Citizens for Better Ground Force. And it is July, we still have five months till November. Let's make good use of it, okay? I put a process, let a process turn.
Thank you, Councillor. Thank you, Councillor Thompson. Councillor Zelinski.
So, first of all, Melissa and Wayne, I believe, from your comments, I think you're not where the most of the people are. Where, from what I've heard in this community, we care about the people in this community. We care about the people that have been here. We want to see appropriate care. So that's not you. You saw, just in front of you here, another group asking for the city's help to find a permanent location. One of the things they provided to council was their financial statements. We're very concerned about you supporting those people in our community. Can you tell me how much money you have in the bank, how much you're spending on training and all these other things, so that we can...
Actually, I don't have those things with me, and I don't necessarily want to do it in injustice and cite anything that's wrong. If the council would like to have those kinds of conversations, that would be great. I could bring forward all that information, and we could talk about it. It doesn't even have to be in a council hearing. I would love for some sort of cooperation in terms of just emails back and forth. We are not reluctant to work with you by any means. And we actually weren't even really coming here asking for you to help find another location. It's more of that, what were they saying, the 10,000-foot level? You have no zoning for these types of facilities whatsoever. If you were to even just address where these things would be appropriately zoned, we could work within that. But right now, there is no semblance of mutual concern or wanting to work together to find those solutions.
Yeah, and so on that note, Mr. Mayor, when our last zoning bylaw was created, the mayor, I believe, was sitting in the same chair. So those social issues were, I believe, probably at the table at the time. But we do have a zoning bylaw. We hired on to this job and made a commitment to people of this community and to the province that we'd follow our own laws also. So just like the province has laws and whatnot, we have laws to follow also. We have process and policy to go on. So that's what we are doing here.
Thank you. I respect that. And I wonder where this process was to allow the variance to begin with.
Yeah.
Right? So how come the exception was made in the winter because of the risk of loss of life? And no stipulation, no write-up, no anything that said, we expect this to close down at this time? We expect this to only be a short... There was no conversation about it.
Yes, so please don't indicate, just like you people are saying to us, silence as a certain point of view. So just because this council didn't say, hey, 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 it doesn't fit the zoning bylaws today, and it being January, don't make that silence an acceptance of the practice.
I don't think it was ever brought up.
Okay, but those are positive commitments.
It was...
Councillor Krog.
The minute, I think, the shelter opened and it was brought up, and I think it was councillor Zelinski, that's it. It doesn't fit the zoning, right? So it was brought up. I just had a couple of questions about financial, not anything else. And one was, you mentioned training. And since the January, according to your numbers, I could be wrong, but it looks like less than $1,000 was spent on training.
Again, I don't actually have those figures, but I know that a first aid level-one course for multiple people is definitely probably more than $1,000, as well as mental health first aid. I think sometimes the mental health first aid is offered for free through Interior Health, which is amazing, and I would suggest all of you to please take it. It is very informative, and it's a resource in our town that we definitely jumped on top of, that would otherwise be probably $300 per person to take. Also, the trauma-informed care course that is scheduled right now. Unfortunately, we are missing our all-day course. After we've flown someone in from Vancouver to provide this, I think she'll understand considering how traumatizing the situation kind of is. But, yeah, I think there's been a few thousand dollars spent towards training. We'd love to see more, but we definitely take advantage of, if courses are made available to us for free, we're all over it.
Okay, and I'm going to have to put a word to this shortly, but moving on before councillor Thompson and councillor Krog, willing to wait.
Okay. What professionals do you have on staff that provide services? I'm talking like psychologists, or psychiatrists, or registered nurses, or...
Anybody.
You know, who's on your staff that deals with that?
Right. Well, we don't necessarily have the ability to hire people that would say be a psychologist or something like that in-house. What we do is we ask other agencies to come in and offer services. So we work very much with Interior Health through their mental health and substance use outreach workers, as well as Anchors is a group out of Nelson that we're within their attachment, so they provide a lot of services to us through there. Sometimes we have private councillors that will make their services available as well through our space. So we're not necessarily the professionals providing the service. We are a conduit for professionals to reach these people, whereas they otherwise wouldn't have that opportunity.
And how often do these professionals come in and work with your guests?
Multiple times a week.
Okay, moving on to councillor Krog.
Yeah, just to get rid of some of the baggage and garbage that's out there, and lies and rumors and stuff.
Getting to the point.
Okay. I heard, and I just want to know if it's true or not, that warming center staffer was terminated after removing a GASP or inappropriate behavior. So what accountability did GASP have to meet socially acceptable levels of behavior? So was somebody terminated because they tried to enforce the rules?
Okay, and I would suggest that you not bother answering that at this point.
I can answer it vaguely. In that I don't know the specifics of whatever circumstance you're talking about, but I can assure you that we would not be firing somebody for following protocol or for enforcing rules. There definitely must be more to the situation than that. Perhaps how they conducted themselves while doing that would perhaps be taken into question. So I think there could be a lot of perspectives on that, and I'm sure that individual themselves has a strong opinion about it. But we don't make those...
Perfect, and maybe should go back to your source.
Gallery, yeah, I'm done, but the gallery hasn't had the opportunity.
I haven't given you a hand, though, but we are going to certainly...
Hasn't had a chance.
Your worship, if I could just speak on the... I want to clear up maybe a little bit of misconception about possibly a few people that are sort of the vigilante groups and quell a few rumors. I'm very concerned about this situation with the warming center that was supposed to be a temporary building. I'd like to mention that the warming center was going to be turned into a marijuana dispensing location if that had gone through. Now, a week or so ago, there was a meeting held, and if that marijuana center was not going to go through then, it was kind of a veiled threat that the warming center would remain in place for an unknown, undetermined amount of time.
And I'm going to ask you to get to the point on this, since we are talking about...
Okay, okay. So first of all, let me remind council that the warming center was a temporary space. It was for the purpose of warming people on cold winter's night, and it was never...
That is not correct.
It is.
It is correct.
It is correct. Hundred days.
Which lasted about three or four days, till the 99th Street project collapsed.
Right.
And they had to take on the care of people overnight. So getting to your point, sir?
I'd also like to bring up and flesh something out, that the warming center, there is a perception of a conflict of interest, your worship. A conflict of interest, that's a rumor, but it's a perception. So if there's a conflict of interest in a situation, I'd like to remind council that if there's a perception only of somebody being involved to a personal level, whether financial or not, but a personal level, that person should recuse themselves from a situation of this.
Who are you referring to?
I'm referring to you, your worship, because I believe you're a friend of the actual owner of the property.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind giving me a chance to answer that.
Yep.
I knew the owner of the property about 1993, '94 with the Marijuana Party. I met him again when he moved to town and bought two of the properties in town. That's not a close relationship. We did know each other by name, but that was as far as it went. The second thing is, I was here as a volunteer for many years, working on housing projects. I've been involved in pretty much every housing project in town from the beginning. I also came back from when you sent me on vacation for four years. I was in Mexico for a while. When I came back, I found horrendous behavior happening in town. I belonged to Beth's. I ended up being the president at the end. And under the direction of Beth, I was asked to try and help the city find a location for some type of supportive arrangement that could be made with a shelter or whatever we wanted to euphemistically call it. And so we did bring in a consultant. We paid good money to a gentleman who came in from Kelowna. He worked with our board over a period of a month or so. We did come up with a location at Second and 68th Street, down by the corner of the Mill, which was on the table at the time of the flood. And so we, as a group, had come to the conclusion that we really wanted to see B.C. Housing not build a large 40-unit or 50-unit building here. We wanted to see it broken up into eight or 10 units in one spot, and suggested that Second and 68th. My involvement with people that are having difficulty in life start with the fact that my whole career has been working with people who are mentally handicapped or disabled in some fashion. And so my interest in this comes very naturally. I was the president of Beth's when they got a letter from the city in November that they had 48 hours to get out of their facility because it was a dangerous building. My reaction to that is well-known. So yes, I have a personal interest, it's a passion, in making sure that people in this town are treated humanely.
You were also the... You were also Beth's liaison to the Whispers of Hope.
I was on their board for, as a liaison for a while, yes, thank you. Pamela, and then Mike.
Hey, sorry, Mr. Mayor, Brian Taylor. You say that you only had not close relationship with Mr. Kennedy or the owner of Weeds. Last council meeting that I was here, I talked to both of those individuals, one-on-one, outside. They were quite familiar with your name and regarding the friendship between the two families. And so you can't say it was a long-distance friendship. It's quite fresh.
I had no contact with him for those years. I don't know if he even has a family. I think he has a wife or girlfriend.
Sorry, would you like to bring Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Weeds and Chris into the building, into this conversation? But I just want to be corrected on this, because I am a resident of Ground Forks. I pay my taxes. And right now, you coached Mr. Kennedy at the last city council meeting. And now, even though I am a board member of Whisper, but I'm not consulted with at all, very vaguely, and that upsets me because it's been several months. And here, my mayor, that I'm paying the taxes to, is now coaching Whisper Hope.
Okay, let me speak to the coaching issue. I told him that what he said was a foolish statement, and he tried to retract it.
No, you advised her not to ask that question.
Not to be digging a hole deeper since what he said.
He said, if he'd talked to you prior to...
Excuse me, councillor.
You're not being totally accurate.
He talked to me prior to...
He said, he stood up and said, "If you had talked to me prior to this meeting, I would have told you not to say that."
I would give that advice to anybody. I saw his statement.
You have been done for me, sir, so it's biased.
You recognized his statement immediately.
You have not advised me, as a residential taxpayer, you have not advised me on how my tax, my land value or anything, or my mental health will be affected, nor my neighbors, or the surrounding people that use the area. So it's biased, and I don't... So it's biased, and I don't appreciate it. So when something is subsist, I would like for it to be non-biased. And Mr. Chris Muslin, you asked for patience? Wow, I think I've shown patience. It's been, you say November, that all these flowery terms, Interior Health and COPS and everyone else has been involved. Where was I involved in any of the conversations? Do not say, I have not shown patience because I, other than once, said the S rats, because I was threatened over across the street, which I had to call the cops. And once again, I had to call the cops again. I had to call 911 again last Wednesday. So where's the harm? So she brings up Section 7 through a lawyer that talks about the counselors and cannot cause harm on anyone. Where's the harm reduction on me? I had to call the cops, 911, once again. 10:30 at night, Wednesday night, somebody was beating the hell out of the cans and not having a good trip. And they said that it wasn't part of it.
Mr. Kennedy, would you please sit down, please? We've heard from you, and other people may wish to speak with you. Sit down, please. Thank you. Obviously a split gallery here. And from the other side, Mike in back.
I want to thank Counselor Krog and Muslin for sort of hitting the pause button on this. The lady that was in with the gymnastics earlier put it best in my view. She said that it's important to delve into history so as to understand why something has failed in the past. This isn't a new issue. There's nothing new under this sign. And I would really encourage Counsel to do their homework, as Mr. Zelinski says, we're not where most of the people are. Those who oppose this bylaw, you're on the wrong side of history and you're on the wrong side of the law. Do your homework. Please look into the Abbotsford situation. Please look into the Victoria situation, the Maple Ridge situation. And as taxpayers, ask yourself what a six-week trial, in the event that one of these people stand up with a human rights complaint or a violation of a Section 7 complaint, we're probably looking north of $800,000 in legal fees. And we all know, if we ask Counselor Korlecht and Thompson, how the chamber worked out when the lawyers got involved. It's been bankrupted. So be very careful. Do your homework and get on the right side of this thing. Because to go down this road and say we're all taxpayers, we're going into a whole lot of hurt financially, into a city that's already traumatized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm not supposed to clap. Gentlemen in front.
Hey, there were two things I was wanting to bring up. First of all, they're both things I just want everybody to really keep in mind when making decisions regarding services such as Whispers of Hope. First off, homelessness and poverty disproportionately affects people of color and LDBT, Q plus communities. So giving them services is very progressive and so that we're against racism and homophobia and transphobia. These people are already the most marginalized in society as it is. They don't need to be marginalized anymore with the poverty that was unfairly placed upon them. Second of all, it's my understanding that since the Warming Center opened, the overdose rates, which you remember, all throughout the Tootsie boundary, we were having practically an epidemic of overdoses. People were dying everywhere. And since the Warming Center opened up, the overdose rate in Grand Forks plummeted. So I feel like we should keep that in mind, especially because I really, really do not want to see that rate go bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, you know, we really, I think we've accomplished a bit today. It's been a pretty respectful discussion. Do you have any final statements? I'm gonna wrap it up here. Dwayne and Melissa.
Really, I know things, you know, get a little hostile when we come here, but really, we're here for the sake of cooperation. We want to solve the problems in town. We want to hear the concerns, and we want to get to the bottom of it, find something that's gonna work for everybody. So I would encourage Counsel that while there's a bit of back and forth here, we very much want to work together, and we want to find solutions to these problems. And we encourage you to just take the time to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counsel, there's no report to accept here. Thank you very much for the presentation. And it's too bad that B.C. Housing was not here. I think it would have rounded things out for us as a group to have them at the table. So thank you very much for coming. Agenda items, Counselors, to finish off. Okay, we're gonna take a two-minute reset. Counselor tough enough, we got another eight hours. Call this meeting back to order. I'm on the Area D report, and I'm just gonna bring up one issue. That is Christina Anderson, who is the new...
Are you on the regional authority, eleven record or what?
I'm on Regional Topics for Discussion, Area D.
Oh, okay. We usually put that on the agenda in case a [inaudible].
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm just making one comment here that Christina Anderson's been hired as the watershed manager. And they're basically talking about committee structure and how that's gonna work. So it looks like we're gonna have an opportunity for someone to be on that as well. So coming forward, if you have some interest in sitting on the advisory committee for the watershed, is that a, yes, I'd like to do it, or? Anyway, moving forward, that we are paying for it, so let's be part of it. And it's a very positive thing for the long-range water planning. All right, and moving from there to presentations from staff. Procurement, Financial Services.
Well, thank God, back to our regular meeting.
I wonder where you were this morning, Nigel?
I must put a reserve notice on my seat.
So this is the, the Committee of the Hall received the report and moved it forward to the August 12 regular meeting for approval and consideration. Counselor Zelinski?
I've got a bunch of questions as I go through it. See, the staff will do a presentation.
Is there a presentation on this? Not really. Right.
Just my questions.
I think your questions would be in order.
Okay, this caught my eye, more comically than anything. Expansion of the list of purchase order exemptions in a greater consistency with actual practice. I hope that doesn't mean that we weren't following the policy previously. So just a comment or anything there. On the policy itself, I'm under Chief Financial Officer 2. Monitor adherence of provisions of this policy and record events in the line of audits.
Can you question it?
What are recordings? Where's that actually going? Is there any disciplinary stuff? It's great to record something, but I don't know if this is taking into consideration.
Can you flesh out a bit more?
Yes, please, ma'am. Right now, we're actually, I would say, what's non-compliance that would be relevant to Counsel? I mean, something like, so something like not issuing a purchase order is really, is really not, you know, probably that measurable and can be addressed internally, which is why there's actually a statement to that effect. But probably a more concern would be compliance with sole sourcing and that current, and, you know, contracts that are awarded, that have been sole-sold. And the policies actually, the existing policies actually have some gaps in that respect because it says that sole sourcing in greater than $25,000 should be reported to Counsel, but it doesn't specify in what manner. Right now, that is being reported as part of the procurement piece on the high-level boards. But that's, you know, how Counsel would like to see that going forward. It's certainly something that, you know, can, I guess, be taken into consideration.
Be modified or accepted. Counselor?
Yes, on C, on that one, is review and approve sole and single-source purchases. Any value on that? I know our schedule says as per budget, but this statement doesn't necessarily...
I'm confused as to what you're asking.
So we're in the policy statement, and it has responsibilities under different headings. One of the responsibilities of Chief Financial Officer is to review and approve sole and single-source purchases. Yeah, we go to the schedule that we have, and we have dollar limits on people. So I'm just wondering whether or not this...
I would think that you would have that authority within those dollar limits that have been established. Would that be the answer?
Yeah, and all I'm saying is, to me, that's the way this statement should read. Review and approve sole and single-source purchases as per this policy or something. It's just open-ended ways.
All right, could be better worded in your estimation.
Seeing as we deal with it further on the policy, I mean.
And actually, I mean, this section on the sole sourcing actually specifies how much. So Chief Financial Officer is, on my own, would be anything under $25,000. And then between $25,000 and $75,000 will be reviewed by me and approved by the CAO as well.
Yeah, and that's all my comment is, is this is the first statement I see about this, and it's open-ended. We'll get further back in the policy, and if it's not open-ended, it's defined. And I'm just wondering whether my definition should appear also that it's up to Chief Financial Officer, is up to a point of dollar value or as per policy or something, just to...
To say what's obviously insinuated but not...
That's fine, we have section whatever.
Yeah, something like that. That's, this is our first kick at it, so I think we can manage it as a policy as well.
All right, so reference there at least.
And Department Heads, number C, each year, the all procurement contracts initiated within the department are completely improperly authorized, including if necessary, a legal review for bid on this. Are the Department Heads making that decision, or is...
I read that as the CFO has called, whether or not there's some reason for concern.
Well, it's under the Department Heads' responsibilities, and that's why I'm asking, whether the Department Heads are actually going out and taking around people to review.
I don't believe that would be the case.
Well, and that's what, they would bring it to the attention of the CFO, who would decide whether or not it was important enough to warrant that action. That's the way I would understand it. That's all I'm reading.
Let's speak to the process a little bit. So this is an reference to when we do an RFP. And it's usually the Department Heads who are leading that process. And so in the event that the bids that we receive are unusual, over budget, or there's legal issues concerning those bids, then that would be the person who's driving the bid process would be best, best, and actually determine whether legal advice is necessary.
There, I understand, I don't agree with the statement I was having. I don't think the Department Head is the one to call for legal review on this.
Okay, we can discuss that as a separate issue.
Well, if you just, pardon me, if I just, if you're out of the Canada, we can review for bid compliance. So I mean, do you think there has to be approved by the CAO?
Well, I'm just wondering, C should be acting as Chief Financial Officer. That's certain, or...
Oh.
You know, ensure authorization and ensure all the other stuff.
I'm not clear on that, Van, can you help us?
So, your worship, I believe the intent here is to move your Department Heads, so say, for instance, where you're doing a bid process for a decade project, the map or whatever, which is a, you know, your development piece. So as we're putting that RFP together, it would make sense that that Department Head would be the one that speaks to legal on that because they would have to understand what that project, you know, I think that they would need some assistance from the CFO for financial advice, but each Department Head is going to know what their project is going to entail. And so it would make sense that they would be speaking to legal with regard to their own project.
Right, but the final decision rests with the CFO or head of the CAO?
Up to the $25,000 and then after, yes.
All right. I think there certainly looks like checks and bounds in that process.
Yeah, the problem I keep hearing is RFP, and this is all standing, so we're not specific on RFPs. So, but we can move on.
Okay.
Exclusions, fire department, cost sharing is excluded.
From what?
Are from any board. The following transactions are of either nature not generally considered for current under business services and are thus excluded from the provisions of this policy. Fire department cost sharing.
It's cost sharing with the regional district.
Yes, that's correct, and that's under a separate contract. So the reason for excluding that here is that it's just basically for the requirements of issuing a BO. But, I mean, the contract can't be signed without both the Counsel and me.
Right.
So how long is the contract with fire department? With the regional district for fire services?
We allow that now.
We've had it in place now for seven years?
Well, it's a service, so it would be done by bylaw.
Right, so there is no end date to that at this point?
Okay, so then that should come back to Counsel then? Well, it says that any services or contracts that last more than five years, it's Counsel.
But if Counselor Thompson made a point that if it's by bylaw, it's a service, it's...
You'd have to [inaudible].
That's by law, it's not set clause or something like that. Which I don't know. Can I get a copy of that? I'd have to look it up.
Okay, can Counsel receive a hard copy of that bylaw, please? Anything further?
Yes, I'm gonna need, use both. The hiring of regular, temporary, casual employees is also a subject of this policy. As long as it's not a statement, it's probably more than anything. Because hiring employees, I don't see that under procurement policy, so I'm just wondering.
Question is...
So sometimes it's necessary to state the [inaudible].
And speaking about stating the obvious, as long as all your staff have read the compliance art, where it says, "We're dividing contracts or purchases to avoid thresholds of this policy", and there's disciplinary actions if that happens, as long as all staff moves that.
So that's another obvious there, that they, well, that those kinds of manipulations of our policies are not acceptable.
I hope it's obvious, that's why I'm hoping that this is passed, that everybody understands that if that does happen, there is disciplinary actions.
Push your hand if you... Okay. Yeah, I think that, again, is something that we would expect in terms of our conduct.
Expect practices sometimes to do things.
Yes, they are.
Look at this bylaw, it's supposed to be the old one. We have five years in here quite a bit, where I didn't see a year criteria in the old bylaw. Did I miss it, or?
Five years for review?
All contracts with the term of greater than five years require Counsel resolution. Contracts with parameters of financial plan, five years, yes. And then there's a couple other five years, and I didn't see anything in the old bylaw.
So are the five-year stipulations new in contract, in your policy? In, in your policy?
Well, they're not, they're not really new in, in that, they're, I believe they're in a bylaw.
Standard practice?
Yeah, they're, you know, they are existing, existing practice that any contract will be refined in this as to, um, to account for council approval.
So, so where, where is that? My suggestion was take it down to three years myself, because some councils won't see anything. But, um, where is the five-year stipulation in a current bylaw or policy?
I have to, I have to verify that.
Can you get back to Counselor Zalinski on that issue of where you would find that in terms of policy?
Yeah, because unless, unless we're tight in some place, I would suggest that when we deal with policy, we're knocking down to three years and, like I said, some councils won't deal with anything unless.
That's mine.
Yes, yeah, that was Counselor Zalinski, I also, that was my sole question too, uh, was the, uh, requirement, but was it different? I was looking at appendix A, which is page nine of this, uh, presentation, and it talks about term contracts, uh, less than five years, uh, C A O approval for all amounts. This is, I think, what you were referring to, Counselor, and term contracts created in five years by a council resolution, all amounts. And I, my question was exactly the same, is that new?
And, and are you supporting the idea that it may be too long, that we should consider it short?
Well, I kind of like Counselor Zalinski's, uh, suggestion that it be three years, uh.
Because of the overlap with elections, which is four years now.
Yes, you know, our change of personnel, all sorts of things could happen.
In five years.
But how many, how many of those do we enter into?
Comment in general, how many numbers? Daniel?
From, from my experience with the contracts I've been dealing with or seeing, it's, we generally try to go for a three-year term with the option to extend by up to two, a year at a time, depending on what it is. For example, the, uh, cleaning contract, uh, with our, with our custodian, basically, is a three-year contract with the option to renew by one year at a time if the city chooses to up to a maximum of five years. So for us, it provides the flexibility, five years to plan with it, but we don't really plan with it. And we don't, we don't go to the max right out of the gate.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that, Heather. Have you done your list?
I, I just got a comment again, is, uh, per, per chart orders exemptions? I see Deagle fees are on there, but concerns me.
Meaning in your mind that they can be?
Well, at some point in time, uh, it was brought up in our, um, annual audit as far as the different legal cases we're in, that I haven't seen a list or how we're.
Where we are in terms of expenditures on those, if, if issued?
Just knowledge for, for council on where we're, uh, where we stepped, that we shouldn't have stepped, I guess, is more than anything.
Okay, so you're not calling for anything in terms of changes there, just for reporting of that to council?
At some point in time, we agreed.
And we're hearing that. Okay, further comment?
Sure. Since you offered, um, under nine, selection of consultants and professional services. Um, I'd like to add a, a bit in there, it says consultants and professional services providers may be engaged directly for services under twenty-five thousand dollars where reasonable evaluation, pre-qualification process has been completed. I would like to put some meat around there that, uh, when, um, when one contractor is, uh, engaged for over fifty K in a year, that a report comes to council. If, if we had one consultant, again, splitting up, uh, by projects so that the, um, the, um, levels aren't, aren't reached, that if we had a consultant in the building on four or five different projects and all of them were under twenty-five thousand, I personally, as a counselor, would like to know that we're using this consultant for four or five different, uh, projects. So I'm just looking for reporting back as if we're using the same consultant or consulting firm over and over.
That there be a top end on that at some point in time?
Well, that we, that we know about it.
Right, okay, does that sound like a reasonable request in terms of reporting? I mean, it speaks to the issue of whether or not we're manipulating our own rules if we applied in a number of contracts under twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so I'll go to the point above that where it says direct awards greater than twenty-five K should be reported to council through the regular monthly procurement reporting process for similar means. So then we get into the consultants and I'm just asking that, you know.
I think you're asking for us to review how this is implemented and what the parameters are of it in terms of reporting. Not as opposed to the document as much as to the reporting.
Oh, no, and I, I've had concerns about accounting, uh, reporting back to council since I got here because I, I'm used to, um, every council meeting, get a list of all the checks that were written for how much, and council could ask questions about where the money's going.
Right.
And this organization with not knowing anything about our accounts concerns me, I guess.
I never, when I was a treasurer, I never gave council that information.
No, but I, I think it's, it's a valid request for us to consider the reporting of, of our finances.
Yeah, I know, I know George Cupp recommended, um, uh, I think, I think when he was the mayor in St. Louis or wherever he was at the time, um, before the, um, checks were issued, the, um, well, I can't remember the name of the report, but, you know, it was the, the purchases and, and council could review that and then the checks went out, but, I mean.
And, and it's not for approval or anything, it's for information?
Yeah.
That is more than anything, so however the means are.
Okay, well, can I suggest that we get this on the table for referral to the August twelfth and that we, we put on the agenda for future discussion, the financial reporting to council on, on procurement and contracts?
Well, financial reporting on.
Financial reporting in general.
On check rate, that's certain.
Okay.
Where the money's at.
Does that seem reasonable, Counselor? Can I have a motion for this, um, committee of the hold receives and reports? Counselor Zalinski, second. Counselor Studley, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Can you produce, like, just kind of through you to our, our CFO? Produce a list of checks that will, because I know, I think you pay every two weeks.
No, the, the regional district does that, I don't know, is that anything that would be useful or have we ever done it? They didn't do it when you were treasurer? I, I haven't seen it down at the city.
I just want to make a look, make word project here.
Can I recommend for staff to, to discuss this separately?
Please, that might answer some of Zalinski's concerns as well.
And I'll get in, into the department reports and just show it.
I, I understand the, the need for oversight, right, that, that council would like to have, uh, council that is, is here to govern and set policies and yes, to have financial oversight for the taxpayers. So some reporting is valid, uh, in how much detail the reporting needs to be, it's going to be a different story. So can we, can we discuss?
Yes, you can, and can you report back to us on that, I think that would be useful. Okay, Counselor, moving forward here, the monthly highlight reports, department managers.
Did we vote on anything?
We voted on the, uh, motion that sent that, uh, procurement policy to the August the twelfth meeting. And we are on monthly highlight reports, and I understand, Counselor Zalinski, that you have some issues to bring up.
Well, a couple of questions on how are we doing with the budget for the fire department, all our added expenditures?
General, how we're doing with the budget for the fire department?
Um, from, from my end, um, I'm hoping to bring a report to August twelfth with some of the amendments to, uh, like the idea of that there was a fire truck purchase planned this year.
Right.
Or one of the command vehicles, uh, under the capital side, but, uh, we kind of need those funds to cover some other stuff and that fire truck may have just to get put off till next year.
Okay, so we can expect a report on the, uh, fire department's financial condition on the twelfth of August?
And when we get the, the bylaw, we'll know how much the regional district should be on the hook for that and stuff.
We do have an agreement with the regional district, you're wanting to review that, I understand.
I just, I just want to know, I'd just like to read it, that's.
Yeah, in part of coffee.
Yes, please.
Okay, further on the monthly highlight reports?
I'm good with that, continue the coffee.
I know, Counselor Moslin?
I, yeah, uh, your worship, just a couple of things, I, are, are you, can we indicate, are you indicating questions now on those?
Yes, I am, yes.
Oh, okay, uh, outside works, I guess, uh, airport cleanup. Uh, it was something we sort of came by, uh, came by me, I went out there, looked around, uh. Right now, the, the fields are covered with the baby breath and the invasive, other invasive weeds. Is there a need, is it necessary to mow, uh, uh, the, the grounds around the airport?
I have no idea.
I don't either, is it?
We mowed the field.
Was it done in the past, is it been?
Gross.
It needs to be a half a year. Yeah, and harvest to be baby spread.
For flowers.
Yeah.
For flowering.
But, um.
We got it, we got it spades.
Well, we don't want that.
Calm down.
So there's a couple of reasons why, um, the grounds would be mowed, one of those fire safety. So whenever you have plump dead grass, there's always the, the risk of a fire starting there.
Okay.
And the second reason is to maintain the area right around the runway, so there's nothing blowing up into it. So cutting it down, especially, I'm sure everyone's seen the baby, baby spread tumbleweeds that occasionally roll through town, so preventing things like that from, um, getting caught up in the propeller wash or in around where the helicopters are accessing the airport.
Thank you, Kevin. Further comments, Moslin?
Uh, can I go on to another topic, Mary?
You will anyway.
Let me know if that works. And that was what I'm going to call the community kitchen trail. That was the trail on the north side of the building on Fifth.
Right.
What hit?
Where is that at?
Where, well, I know where it's at, nothing, nothing's happened.
Well, I think that, that we did ask for it to be dealt with, and I'm just wondering what the disposition is.
So we could go out and do a preliminary layout on the city lane at the top of the trail?
Right.
And we consulted with U J S and property owners, and one of them did not like that plan, so we asked them what would work better for them, and they suggested a fence at the bottom of the trail. Uh, and so we're looking at the layout for that and, um, trying to get an agreement with the other property owner on attaching to a portion of the property.
Thank you, Counselor Moslin.
Just a suggestion, that it would be bike friendly. Uh, that if you're, think about being bike friendly and how that trail might work. It was brought up by a letter by Mr. Caskey, if you could, if you could improve the grade of that trail and pave it, uh, put boards at the end of it, uh, you might make it more of a, uh, a, a, an amenity to the area.
Yeah, it's pretty steep.
I know, I know, that was under. No, it's pretty steep.
With adults, I think that the concern were kids racing like that, that helped on that.
Well, I've seen kids and adults, they just come zooming in, racing traffic, so I think the concern was the bikes maybe not being as cautious as they should with the, all the traffic that's happening there.
Okay, so it sounds like there's work underway and that we could expect further information on that in future.
Uh, this where the direction of the council was to block that trail from access, and so I don't think that's compatible with the idea of making it bike friendly?
Did, did we, did we say block it or did we say make it?
Well, I talked about putting boards or, or barriers to.
Purpose was to make it safe, so if we're.
I thought, yeah, I thought the purpose was mainly just to slow down bikers, just something that would make them at least stop at the end or get off their bike again.
Not got hit by a car.
And if you stand there, you'll watch people going up and down it all the time.
Yeah.
Either dismount it on your bikes going up, scarily, so come down, or dismount. Anyhow, it's a well-used area, and, uh, I just wanted to comment on it, because I didn't see any happening.
No, and Kevin?
This where, um, can I ask for a clarification resolution on that front, just so that we, right now, our intent was to fence it with security fencing such that access would be impossible or very difficult. So if it is the wish of council to actually make it a more accessible trail, then that would be contrary to the current plan. So if, if there's just a resolution, directing staff in the current direction of council, that, that would make it better for us.
So we can give direction to staff and committee of the whole, Counselor Zalinski?
So, so I would suggest that, that we find the original resolution and start permitting, since it has to be changed.
Interesting question.
Yeah, let's not derail at this point, let's, let's go back and look at the original resolution if we could.
I believe at this point, you have a full resolution, follow what?
Right.
I think it was.
Sir?
Bless Johnson, um, yeah, if you were trying to make the trail more amenable for hiking and biking and stuff like that, wouldn't that end up being a bigger cost to the city, like in terms of infrastructure and that type of stuff? And if you do, and then invite people to use that trail, that's also a liability, the issue of some, somebody actually hurts themselves. I hate to be a downer, but.
Okay, complications there, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, your worship and counselors, my name is Nigel James, and I've lived in Grand Forks for just over ten years. Um, I am no longer allowed to cycle, so I do, I can only really speak from, shall I say, past experience. The trail is short, it is a good one for training on, but it's not long enough. And therefore, I can't believe that any mountain biker who wants to do any training or et cetera would ever use that darn thing except as a shortcut, uh, risking his life and limb, uh, to get down from the top to the bottom. Um, that's my view.
Okay, so we, we've given Kevin absolutely no direction on this, but we will start back with looking at the original motion and work from there.
Gloria, I believe your last work on, the last consensus on this was that it was a dangerous place.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a bit?
The last, your last consensus on this issue of the trail there was a safety issue, it was a dangerous place.
Right.
And, uh, you felt, I think, that it shouldn't be used that way, or encouraged to be used.
Rather than blocking it, we were concerned that we make it safe?
Well, or not use it, not allowed to be used.
Right, or not use it at all?
Yeah.
Okay, I, again, we're using up a lot of airtime here, and I think Kevin's got a report back to us on this in future in terms of what might be practical and possible within our means?
Counselor, what on there? I just wanted, in water and sewer, there were major repairs on Seventy Second to Kettle.
Okay.
But they are not mentioned in the report. Can somebody comment on that, what happened there?
Report's going to be two weeks ahead, that's why.
Sorry?
The, the report's going to be two weeks ahead, so we didn't know what.
That's true, that's true, it's like trying to get into your council.
Right, so we, that was before this report that we're looking at now, is that correct?
When was those repairs, Counselor?
Well, you can see them in place now, if you go by, they're, you know, they're taking a whole. Well, it's not the first time they've been digging a big hole.
Thursday, Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
So, so based on that, it would come in the highlight report for July?
That's what I understand.
Okay.
Because it would be the month of July.
All right.
But seeing as Counselor Moslin's on that title, uh, the last bullet point, responded to contractor infrastructure strike.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, communications.
Uh, so in plain language, uh, someone hit something and it broke.
Oh. Okay, so it felt like a straight jaw action.
No, it was like striking a pipe with a digging machine.
All right, cleared that up. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the monthly highlight report, Counselor Zalinski?
Well, just one quick question, that, this confuses me, that, uh, boundary flood recovery, completion of commercial lodging support program.
Is that the rental of the house from the city?
Yeah.
Grant?
Yes. To correct it.
To the mayor, so, uh, one of the programs offered this winter funded from the original estimate in D C was to, uh, provide people, um, in need of commercial lodging and staying in a hotel, basically. And, and that program initially, originally was funded through the end of March, um, because of some of the rebuilds that were, uh, starting to happen with, um, Mennonite disaster service and some of the other, um, initiatives, um, needed to extend a little bit further, but, uh, the government, uh, wouldn't, you know, they, they only extended it to the end of June. I understand that Red Cross, uh, is still supporting two families who are in the middle of a rebuild with Mennonite disaster service and, and they'll be up at the legislature.
And then one, one last comment or observation, especially after our presentations this morning. Uh, it looks like we already have a, a camp on municipal property issue, uh, as per the, uh, building.
Uh, it looks like we already have a camp on municipal property issue, uh, as per the building inspector's report. So, even though the Warren Center's still up and running, it looks like we have an issue with people.
We have several campers out there at this point, we're up camping.
I think you've always had that. In some cases.
In the last few years, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, further on this, can I have a motion to adopt this, on the Tuesday?
I just wanted to point out for all of our fans at home that it looks like Dawson Drive is going to get paved. Do you have any ETA on when they're going to start on that, just to see, it's a list of things to do here?
Nope.
Are we paving Dawson Drive? They're like, huh, we're paving Dawson?
The bullet point there was on the repair that was done, so, uh, council approved, uh, budget amendment for the section that blew out near the car block on Dawson Drive.
Yes.
And so, that section was repaired, and that's what it's going to be.
Okay, thank you. Okay, but then, and the motion?
I hate Mayor, I know we're so far behind in our agenda, Mayor, I know. But I, I guess, I walk back to building inspection and bylaw enforcement, Counselor Zelinski did refer to this, uh, the concerns and complaints about, uh, camping, uh, the, the, the bylaw enforcement officer wrote, "The situation is being monitored closely, relocation options are being considered." I, I just wanted to ask, what relocation?
I think that's hopeful thinking.
That's what I thought, I mean, did you have anything in mind? Does anybody know?
I have something for in camera later this morning.
Okay, all right.
Later this morning.
Sorry.
I'm going away.
Okay, a motion to accept the monthly reports. Counselor Corlick, we don't need a secondar, all those in favor? All right. Counsel remuneration review. Uh, the way that I understand it is that the previous counselor, council left us with the three percent increase lift. We did have the choice previously of going through a process of having a community, uh, committee, uh, review, or choosing one or two options that were placed in front of us at the time. Um, how do you wish to proceed on this? Counselor Moslem?
Your Worship, I'd like to drop it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I would, put it off indefinitely. Uh, perhaps the timing might be better in the last year of our term to do this, uh, that's often when it's done. Uh, so, the recommendation comes in before the term ends, and, uh, you know, people in the election...
That's what we tried to do last term, but that was deferred.
Everything got deferred.
Yes, we got deferred.
To, to, to this council, um, but I, I don't think this is the time to start with the increase of council discounts.
No, and I wouldn't say it's an increase, it's that, um, we don't have those eyes a week before the election on it.
Yeah.
You do it now, and whatever, you know, recommendations come back, then council can deal with it, but if you're not in a rush to do it, or you're not in a timeframe, like, even if the report comes back in three months, we don't have to deal with it for another year, basically.
So, you're suggesting that they go ahead with the community committee and report back to us on recommendations and when they would be implemented?
Uh, report back on, on recommendations, if that's what it's all about.
Yeah, and we would accept them or not accept them, and also look at implementation tag.
Yeah.
Is that the decision we're wishing to move forward on, Counselor Moslem?
I just, I worry about, I, our, our to-do list, Mayor, is, is unreasonable, just to put it mildly. And I, I don't want to put another thing on staff's to-do list, uh, in the immediacy of, uh, you know, trying to figure out what we're going to do with all those homes and all that everything, all that other stuff.
I guess my, my question to Counselor Moslem is, when is the plate going to be empty, so that we can add on?
Yeah, can I hear?
Eight years or no?
Daniel? Thanks, Mr. Mayor, so the, we're only bringing this back because council in February asked for us to bring it back now. So, like, if council wants to drop this until six months before the election, which is actually what the bylaw says, uh, to do it, said, we, we were simply trying to fulfill council's wishes. Uh, I think the decision was made to wait until the DMAP grant was resolved and, and then look at this. But, um, we're fine with waiting until January or whatever and start the process as it is in the bylaw.
We, this is just our first year, we haven't finished our first year as a, as a council, so...
But I guess all I'm saying, the task, the sooner it gets them to file, then the better we are off, and...
But things could change, right, in the council landscape from now until two and a half years from now, when the report really should be done.
Oh, oh, true, but the last report was done how long ago?
It wasn't done.
Yeah, so, get one on the books, and for this council, then, uh...
Well, it was a recommendation by management, but it wasn't accepted by, by the council.
Well, we have those recommendations in this report, you can still choose from one of the recommendations from staff.
No, I think I'd rather have an advisory group.
That's two. I mean, it does lay it on our CFO in terms of doing this, but there's no tight timeframe to it. Can we have a motion on this in terms of some direction to staff?
I'll get it on the floor.
Counselor Zelinski?
Yeah, that we proceed with that.
Proceed with the process and establish it as a timeframe that is respected in future planning.
Yeah, I get the, the, when the panel committee be struck to look at this.
That was the one. Further comment on this?
Yeah, sorry, Your Worship, I missed the, was there a motion?
Motion was that we do the, um, review by committee.
And, and basically, option one, receives your, and asks staff to proceed with the proposed work plan?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, uh, did, was the move a secondary?
Moved, and, um, although we don't need a secondary this morning.
Okay, well, I'll speak against it, Your Worship, I, I think, uh, briefly, I think I've already heard, we've got way too much to do on our list, it's not even in the realm of possible. Uh, I, I believe myself, uh, well-renumbrated, uh, and, uh, I, I don't see, uh, the need for this at the moment that we, uh, put our, put off till the last six months of the turn around to put the bylaw.
And Mr. Gaines?
Thank you, Worship, um, it was just that, the last time it came up, I was here and I volunteered to be on the committee. That should be enough to make sure that the committee doesn't, doesn't sit. The, the thought is, yeah, um, I, I did, I did my own calculations, I think the mayor is underpaid, actually, and the councilors are very much overpaid. Having said that, I can see that the vote will not pass, um, but bear in mind that you've all had your fifty dollar traveling expenses, thank you.
Thank you. And so, we have a motion on the floor in terms of going ahead with the process as defined. I'm going to support it, I think that we are lax to not do that on a periodic basis, and I think it's up to us to establish that. When we implement it, it's a secondary part of the decision. Going to call for the motion, then, do you wish to repeat that, Counselor Zelinski?
Uh, then we have staff proceed with striking a committee to look at the remuneration for council.
All right.
Is that a recommendation to, to, to I see?
Um, do we need to move that to tonight, or can this be direction to staff?
Your Worship, I think if we popped it into the regular and obvious path, like, um, I think that there's really not a time constraint here.
No.
It, it gets problematic for staff to hop things into, uh, existing regular...
Well, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Um, just one more question, would council be okay to receive this report back by, let's say, uh, January or something like that? Our CFO has some holidays planned as well.
Oh, so she can see on holidays?
I'm simply trying to say, like, because the, the finances don't have to be in place until the next council, like, is it okay if it takes us six months versus the three months or so?
Well, I don't know, we'll have to have a debate.
Well, okay, we're passing that motion, and we're not asking for it to be expedited quickly. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie?
So, if we can have it next week, that would be...
Vacation on reserve funds. Okay. Where are we at here? Guys are getting hungry, I can see why, they're strange. Okay, and, uh, the last item here is the Council Forest Industries, and all I can say on this matter is that we are on this at a regional level. Grace McGregor, Area D, and City, we are talking actively about our participation in, um, being part of a new forestry initiative which is yet to be fleshed out. But it looks like the doors are opening here in terms of the ministry being open to speaking to communities about their involvement in their water sheds. Is that the way you read it, Counselor Moslem?
I, I was trying to figure out, by reading the premier's letter, if the local government even invited. I didn't see the caregiver mayor's meeting, uh, but he, he seems to want a conversation with the industry.
But not the politician.
I didn't see any reference to local government, we haven't been invited, have we?
Well, that's what we're working on, is to get that invitation, so we know the process, it sounds cumbersome, but, you know, you realize you just don't pop out, you have to be invited to the meeting. So, yes, we are on it, and I, we've had two presentations at the regional level already, and a commitment from the region, basically, to go forward with initiatives related to controlling our watershed.
It's interesting, Mayor, because this, the person who corresponded with us and put this on our agenda, she actually received two emails from two area directors who were stepping back from it. Uh, and it looked like, whoa, they're passing it on to the city, here I am at the city meeting, and they're passing it on to the regional district.
Well, the regional district at a community level, the Boundary Economic Development Group is upon, I'm talking about that at the regional level.
Okay.
And, you know, again, very successful, um, community forests are going on in Midway and Greenwood, both of which have been highly successful for both communities.
Well, they're joined, I think they have a together vote.
They do. They left us out. All right, nothing further on this, um, I have a motion to accept the correspondence. So moved by Counselor Thompson, all those in favor? Um, we have no late items, and we have questions from the public and the gallery to finish off this morning's meeting, and, uh, are there any further comments or questions people would like to ask? Yes?
I do, um, I'm not sure.
Identifying yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Angela Nichols, uh, I've lived here since I was a baby. I'm wondering about, um, the petitions and delegations earlier, um, the letter C, um, the one that was asking for an amendment to the zoning bylaw. I, I wasn't present in the room, so I don't know, um, if you guys are looking at doing that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you.
Yeah, could you repeat yourself, Angela?
Okay. Um, underneath the registered petitions and delegations earlier this, uh, this morning, um, there was letter, or, letter C, uh, a request that council initiate an amendment to the zoning bylaw to specifically prevent the current use of the neighboring property on Fifth Street. I wasn't present in the room when that agenda item came up, so I'm just kind of wondering, can you tell me?
That was the she or her, or what?
Yeah, she, yeah, she wasn't here.
Okay.
Nothing...
Yeah, so no, the council had read her concerns, but we did not respond to that letter, she was not here.
Okay, um, does that mean there, there is no amendment to it, or are you discussing it?
What she was looking at was for us to amend our bylaws.
Right.
So, we could preclude the kitchen that's planned for that location, so, uh, no, we're, we're not responding at this point, nor is it reasonable for us to make amendments to our bylaws that quickly, and also to, uh, have them act retroactively.
Those bylaws are going to be reviewed anyway, I think, starting in September?
That's what I'm watching.
Go ahead.
Um, Whisper of Hope is also on, on the agenda, um, so, and I was, I was assuming, um, that they would, it would have been the soup kitchen, that they were, um, eyeballing on that one. Um, what I do want to say is that, uh, even though there is a lot of controversy and a lot of negativity towards Whisper of Hope in particular, uh, I am actually quite thankful for what they do, and one of, one of which is the soup kitchen that they are opening. Uh, people may not be aware of the number of families, as well as elderly, uh, as, uh, people in our community that could benefit from the soup kitchen as well. And, uh, I just want people to keep in mind the importance of those particular services that that soup kitchen would offer for people in this town.
Thank you, Angela. There's been a big uptake into people using the food bank as well, so certainly general to the community. Further from the gallery? Nigel, I'm Mr. James.
Thank you, Worship. Firstly, I would like to thank, um, very much for the posting of a picture of our head of state, actually, on, on the far wall. And I, I suspect I owe my thanks to Mrs., uh, Dresler, uh, uh, Dresler, actually, Mrs. Dresler and McKinnon, I suspect, they had hands in it. And thank you very much for doing that.
Another way, still. Counselor Park, Mr.?
Someone mentioned flags, that has given me now another ten seconds. The flags in Gyro Park are looking very sad. A wash might help them brighten themselves up, or it might wash more of the printing out of them, I don't know which.
That has been brought to our attention periodically, because they do wear out in that location and are replaced on a fairly regular basis, but washing doesn't help them, they fall apart from the ultraviolet.
That's right, and the only time when it might be is straight after winter, when the muck and sirens might brighten them up slightly for a short period of time. The other point I would like to raise is, just in passing, actually, it's my own negligence that has caused this. The three, sorry, the four properties on Seventieth Avenue, um, rumor has it that it was, uh, eighty thousand dollars, is that about right?
No, I'm sorry, the four properties?
On Seventieth Avenue.
Seventieth Avenue.
I heard rumors about seventy, about eighty...
Sixty, sixty-four thousand is what the city paid for those.
Sixteen...
Well, I looked up, and the reason why I said I'm negligent, this is really to the chief financial officer, please, Your Worship. Um, on the, uh, quarterly report, first quarter, that's why I'm negligent, which is three months out of date. But, all the expenses for, uh, various activities have all been carefully noted against the funding source. There is, the last one on the list was for land purchase, which was for sixty-five thousand and forty-one dollars.
Yeah, yes.
And there was no, uh, funding source mentioned, the only one that was not mentioned.
Land reserve fund?
Yeah, bylaw's been amended. Well, that, that was actually an in-camera resolution, and I didn't have that at the time when I prepared that budget, so I didn't know exactly what the funding source is. So, I'd have to, uh, review the in-camera resolution, we want to...
Whether we specified a source or not in that motion.
Sorry, Nigel.
We can find that out.
I was tardy on that one, sir.
I'm sorry?
I, I was tardy on that one, I didn't catch it, sir.
No, but it brings us over to another point, that nobody knew anything about it, it hadn't been discussed, it hadn't been discussed naturally, be, in the, in the January, February meetings, et cetera, the financial budgets and so on. But it brings up the thing of where the sixty-five thousand was spent, which works out about, I think it's thirty-four dollars per property within the city, um, which is about the same as the, um, the property, the parcel tax for the fire truck. Um, it's, these things, they just add up, and the thing is, whilst the chief administrative officer has got unlimited, or proposed unlimited funds to be used where necessary, um, and off the top of my head, the chief financial officer was fifteen thousand, I think, or something like that. But how does the, that's the members of staff, but why, who actually bought the property? Was it this council?
The council bought it strategically, knowing that we are, have a West End plan.
Yes.
Uh, and bought it because it was also an excellent buy, being unserviced, uh, so it was an opportunity for us to consolidate some holdings in the West End. So, it was a very properly taken consideration of our future in moving that direction.
The, the problem there, Your Worship, is, is that, okay, it's, it's a good idea, but these were brought on, uh, without sort of let or hindrance, and any advice or comment from the, the population. And I realize that you have time factor. And I realize that you have time factors, but it's, I would think it's a bit of, as has been said recently, a slippery slope to do these sort of things.
Right.
All in camera.